Good morning. The June 10, 2020 Board Work Session is now called to order. We are continuing with modifications to our workshop process to address health and safety concerns as a result of the COVID-19 emergency. Today, board members will assemble in the boardroom without community attendance. The public may join us via our usual streaming channels. Pam Rolcall, please. Mrs. McDougall.
Present.
Mr. Susan.
Present.
Mrs. Belford.
Present.
Mrs. Deskovich.
Present.
And Ms. Campbell.
Present.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have several items on our agenda today for discussion, including checking in on our progress since we completed our self-evaluation identifying our annual objectives as a board for 2021. Additionally, there are some other discussion items that have been placed on this agenda. We'll go one by one, keeping track of our time so that we can finish by 12:30. I also ask for each of you to sign the school board working guidelines before you leave today. If you all recall, when we wrapped up our self-evaluation, one of the things that we discussed was the need to kind of revisit because I think Ms. Campbell and Ms. McDougall, actually, were not even aware of the evaluation that we had done previously and the objectives that we had set. So at that point, spoke with Ms. Askobar and I asked her to put on quarterly board check-ins for us. And I think it's important because, you know, we get bogged down in the work that we're doing each and every day, and sometimes we forget to do what we need to do to take care of us as a team and make sure that we're still functioning well. I think we certainly have seen many examples of boards that don't function well, and I think it hinders their service to the community. So want to make sure that we're all staying on the same page and working toward the same goals, addressing any issues as we go. So the first thing that we have on the agenda this morning is a progress check. And that is just, how are you guys feeling? Do you need anything? Are there any particular issues that we need to address before we get into establishing our objectives because we did not get that done last time?
Before we get started in this now, is there any way to conclude the AAU Olympic discussion of getting back to head and here to try to discuss what we do? Does anybody have another? I'd like to move the discussion point to the A.A.U. one we're talking about now so that we can allow them to give their testimony.
They're not coming in though, right?
No, they're just going to be on the phone, like giving the cell phone messages to Askobar what he asked. I just couldn't get them to write a letter for a few minutes after we last night.
They can't hear you.
I'd like to make a motion to move the AAU Olympic item agenda up to the A.A.U. one that just started since it's improper to go to this very start from one. And the reason for that is we have individuals that come to speak to that point. They would do that via the cell phone, but they're all together here and they're in the process of putting some other things together, which makes it difficult for them to be available all at the same time.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Do we usually vote at a work session?
We can't vote on an item on the agenda, but we need guidance as to what you all want to do as far as reordering the agenda.
Okay.
Okay. Any board members opposed to moving the AAU item up on the agenda?
Can I ask, I have a question. Seeing that they're on the agenda for our board meeting on the 16th, I'm confused on why they need to be down because I think there would be some discussion then, but and I was under the impression that this was our check-in. I'm just confused. That's all. You know, help me understand why they need to come now and not wait till the 16th.
So my discussion with Mr. Susan yesterday around the issue was to have them available for questions. So that's...
I think also my discussion when I was with Ms. Suhann, she had mentioned that it was going to be on the agenda and that she would be ready to answer any questions that were going on with the multiple areas. And one of the reasons that they are putting it on for discussion today is because they literally are moving at a fast pace to try to get these AAU Olympics in. And it's something that came up at the last minute. They've been able to take advantage of a lot of different resources quickly and being able to discuss it and possibly give direction to Dr. Mullins today over whether we want to use the facility usage, whether we want to waive fees, whether we want to use the track. All of that stuff is part of this discussion from what I understood. So that's why I asked them through the conversation with staff, so that's why I asked them to come in the event that there were any questions.
So are we good with moving it to the top of the agenda? Anyone opposed?
After the current one that we're on.
That's okay. Well, progress check and board objectives, I think, probably go together. So I would suggest that we just go ahead and if we're going to move it up, let's just do it and get it done and then move into the rest if that's okay with you all.
Sure.
All right. Dr. Mullins, did you want to give us an overview on this or how do you want to proceed on that particular discussion point?
Am I working? Okay. I can give the board a quick overview. I've been in recent communication with, of course, Mr. Susan and Mr. Buchanan, who is the Vice President of AAU. Approximately Wednesday of last week, he reached out to me. I had inquired with the county on last Wednesday, having been made aware of the county commission meeting that occurred the Thursday prior, that there was discussion about moving forward with AAU. In conversations with Mr. Buchanan, he is trying to identify and determine what the facility needs would be of the Junior Olympics. And I believe he had a conversation with Ms. Moore as recent as this morning to further define what the facility needs would look like, but I've not received a formal proposal as of yet, what that would look like. He has indicated that there would be a need for a track and two gymnasiums to host indoor events that include baton twirling competition, taekwondo, I believe karate. And then if basketball, hosting basketball becomes a necessity, I guess there's still some question as to whether or not Disney Wide World of Sports would be available to host that, and if not, they would have need for additional gymnasiums to host basketball. But I believe we're still working through or waiting for some definitive definition of what a facility use would include. There has been discussion that includes, well, what track to utilize and of course consideration of the Vera High School's track with required or necessary modifications because I guess it could not host as it is in its condition now, the games. But there's also been an inquiry of utilizing satellite high schools track. So they've not made a formal request either way. Ms. Han has been working on what the necessities of resurfacing Vera High School's track would include and the costs and so on. I believe she's got information ready to share with the board this morning. Ms. Belford, just to clarify, if you'd like, I can ask her to hatch in by phone versus in person. So Ms. Han, you be prepared for us to reach out to you at your desk because we are limiting guests in here this morning. Board of... Tuesday, that includes a decision on moving forward with construction of Vera High School's track. Second, the board's direction on funding the modifications to Vera High School's track if in fact there's direction to do the construction. And then three, there is, actually, there's four things. Three would be the board's direction on charging fees for facility use by an outside organization, in this case AAU. And then fourth, direction on the memorandum of understanding presented by Brevard County Commission, the Brevard County Commission, related to the contribution they're prepared to make to the resurfacing of Vera High School's track in the amount of $50,000. Mr. Gibbs has done a review of the MOU and has raised some questions and certainly some decision points for the board as we move forward. So I think that outlines the need for the discussion today so that I can receive direction from the board of what to have prepared and ready for potential board approval on Tuesday. We are on a very aggressive timeline, so that discussion is necessary today in preparation for Tuesday. So, Ms. Belford, does that help?
It does. Thank you. So I believe the first item that you addressed was the project to resurface the Vera track. That was your number one, right?
Correct.
Can I give a kind of an overview as to how...
Real quick, didn't someone send us the quote? I can't, what, did you send it?
Yes, I emailed it to the board on Monday. That was a quote. Ms. Han has done some additional work since that quote, since Monday. I believe she... Did you pass that around to the board members from Ms. Han?
She did.
I left it on her.
Oh, yeah. Here. Yeah. So she's prepared to answer questions related to some additional costs that I've just made aware of this morning.
Ms. Belford, can I speak to the items? So on, just to give you guys a heads up, how this whole thing came to be, like, why are we dealing with something so quickly and what is this on the agenda and how is all this piece working together? Like, how does this glue? On May 15th, I got a call to come real quick to a meeting that they were putting together to discuss the possibility of bringing the AAU Olympics to Brevard. I listened to what the TDC chairman, along with the county commissioner and a couple other individuals had mentioned and said, okay. I said, this has got to go to Dr. Mullins and to our school board for approval, and what we need to do is is get them informed immediately. So that day, an hour later, I contacted Ms. Suhann and explained to her what was going on and reached out and made sure that staff was aware. Then on that Monday, right after that, on the 18th, I reached out to and talked to Dr. Mullins and just put it on his radar and said, hey, here's what's kind of going. At that time, it was an idea of trying to bring. Now, at the same time as this happened, the city of Chicago, the Disney, everybody had components to this whole AAU National Olympics, and they were making a buying push to do it. So I had told Dr. Mullins and Sue that based on what's going on, I would wait to engage until it actually makes it official that they are coming to Brevard. Because right now, we don't know, on the 18th, we didn't know what they needed. Turns out that now, the ask for the district is a track and a couple of gyms. There's also, just so you understand, almost 40 other sports coming on regionally impacting almost all of our cities and all of the other municipalities. So you have surfing, you have skateboarding, you have swimming. Those are not facilities that are being used by the school district. You have seven-on-seven football, you have lacrosse, you have all of those other anomalies that are happening outside of our school district. Part of the ask that they were asking the school board to be a part of was not only just to be a part of for the capacity, but also one of the issues that we have that's a tremendous impact to our schools is that our athletic budgets are decimated. So if you have, if you call any of your coaches right now and you ask them, where are you with fundraising over this COVID, they will tell you that absolutely they're decimated right now. And each one of these events that are inside each one of our schools actually brings in $3 in concession for every attendee that's there. So if you're talking about a gym that's going to be inside there, hosting 10 days worth of it, and you have 10 teams in there, the impact for that gym is anywhere between $5,000 to $10,000 of concessions over that time. So from that perspective, it starts to look like a, okay, this is a good thing for us to do. So what they had mentioned originally was, where is the best track that you have? What's going on? And I said, the best track that we have right now is probably in satellite. They had mentioned that their direction was to go towards Vera because of the other issues, the other events that are occurring there. So what I had said was, Vera has completed all but about $20,000 worth of fundraising to resurface their track. So if somebody was out, was able to come out there and say that they were able to pay for the difference, then there might be an opportunity to resurface the track. So the county said, what is the delta difference? The TDC offered $50,000 to finish the track. So with that said, that then, the track then became a conversation, and that's when Suhann started getting involved and the team started making quotes and come to find out that in the middle of that process that they had to, which was not known to the Vera parents, which was not known to the TDC, which was not known to the county commissioners, is that the surface of the track has to be redone before the resurfacing and enhancements are there. So the actual amount that was needed to complete the project then increased. The issue that you have when it did that was, is that now the parents have considered to, they have consistently raised more and more and more money to where they are now past the threshold with the county's addition, and now they are fundraising to actually pay and offset the extra costs that is the job of the school district to do that. So as far as the resurfacing, they are now still fundraising to try to get to a point where they can help us on the other end. The whole track issue has multiple other fingers, but I just wanted to kind of tell you why certain things were coming and how they came to us. So I'm here for any discussion, and I would really love if we could just let the TDC and the AAU guys speak to what's going on because I'm kind of moving around, and I would love to have them give the direction, the regional impact to our economy, which is estimated by... between $7 and $9 million, 8,000 to 9,000 athletes. All that stuff is better heard from them and put together. Is there a way, Ms. Belford, that we can call the TDC chairman and ask him to kind of give that input?
Ms. McDougal?
I have a question. If I was reading the contract that Mr. Gibbs sent us, it looks like that we couldn't charge for anything. They didn't want us to charge a fee, they didn't want a facility use, they didn't want, they didn't want a lot of things. So I want to make sure that, number one, we're not paying a penny. Because I have several schools that have been asking for a track for years. And here we are, Vera gets it again, when Cocoa Beach hasn't, Merritt Island wanted to buy back, let me loan money, and we said no. So I want some equitability here between districts. I get very, my Cocoa Beach people will be up in arms. There's no doubt about it in my mind. So I really don't want any money spent from our budget on this. So if the parents have fundraised it, absolutely great. But I'm also concerned about, we can't charge fees, we can't, I'm hearing concession stands, that's the first I've heard about that. And I'm hoping that's allowed. But what's in it for us?
So if I can speak, if I can speak to your equity issue, I would love to address that because it's an issue that I had when this whole thing started. I would love to communicate that piece to you. But as far as the contract and what's been going on, I would love to ask the TDC chairman to speak to that, along with the AAU. Because I don't think it's appropriate that I speak to what their requirements are, if that makes any sense.
Absolutely.
Can we have that TDC chairman called?
So you want Mr. Crane?
Cranus.
Someone maybe have a comment, surprise, what they're asking us? Because I see the $400,000, $200,000, what they've raised, or like, $50,000 coming from the county, what are you looking at?
I think that's going to be Sue explaining that in a minute. I think that the track discussion is like the third of the things. I think we need to decide, I would have brought that up last, and we just need to decide, do we want to bring, give the AAU the opportunity to come here? Are we going to waive the facility usage fees like the county and all the cities are in the process of doing? And then the Vera track is another piece. I think we get kind of mauled down in a location that is not really essential to what today's conversation would be, if that makes sense.
My question after that comment would be, what are our costs outside of the track? And sorry that I'm not familiar how these things usually run, but why, economic impact understood, but where do they traditionally hold their Junior Olympics? And is?
It's got four locations. I'm sure that Rusty will answer that question.
And do they get it for free everywhere they go?
$2 million each area pays to have the Olympics come. Yes.
They pay to have them come, so they do get it for free?
Yes.
Wow. Not going to door and ask them what's their phone number?
No, that's their number. You want to call it again? I mean, they're outside in the event.
While we're waiting, I can potentially address the facility use fees. We're in the process, prior to any of this transpiring, I believe I've made the board aware that we've been in the process of reevaluating our facility use fee rate schedule because the facility use of tomorrow. We'll wait.
I keep asking questions while we're waiting.
I can speak?
I can move. Who knows the difference between the red and the green surfacing? Who knows the difference between red and green surfacing? Anybody?
It's $20,000 in difference. Red is a common.
Like, why would we pay more for green?
If it was the school wanted to, they could, but they've never given direction.
Because of the school colors, that's why?
Yeah, but they're not.
Oh, okay. I thought there was some.
Yeah, I think that's an option that they've given. And I think Sue would be able to explain why there's an extra cost. She, because of the time delay, she wanted to bring in a contractor who, see it, which created.
Is Mr. Cranus?
Mr. Cranus, can you hear me? Mr. Cranus, can you give us an overview of kind of how you came to be through this system as far as bringing the AAU Olympics? But then from your perspective, there's some conversation wrapped around the actual MOU?
I haven't.
Along with, if you can give the regional impact and why the TDC is willing to bring the money towards Vera High School. Thank you.
Sure, absolutely. First of all, thank you for letting me speak. I'm sorry I can't be there in person. And I did want to mention that my mom was a 20-year educator in the Brevard County school system. She retired a few years ago, so very near and dear to my heart. I'm the executive director of the tourist development office. We're a department of Brevard County, so I'm a Brevard County employee. I was contacted a few weeks ago by the AAU and attended the same meeting Mr. Susan mentioned in terms of the opportunity to bring the Junior Olympics here, which frankly is unprecedented because most venues have to pay a significant amount of money to have an event of this scale there. You know, my interest really piqued when we talk about how many athletes and parents and coaches and others will be coming into the community and staying here, staying in hotel rooms and rental properties and generating, you know, everything from a sales tax, tourist development tax for the county. So it's a huge benefit to the community and a huge benefit to individuals who are coming here for, you know, basically the opportunity to play in these games, which frankly probably would not have happened because Virginia, which was holding the games, backed out and basically said they, due to COVID, they didn't want to go forward. So I think we have a huge opportunity here. We reached out to the state of Florida, Florida Sports Foundation, got involved, they're very interested, and got actually the governor involved, and now the governor has been very supportive of this. What we think it'll do for the community, I mean, depending on the number of athletes, you know, we're estimating anywhere between $3 and $8 million economic impact, anywhere from $10,000 to $20,000 hotel room nights. You know, that's happening at a time where the tourism industry frankly is decimated. We were down in April 75% from the prior year. But we need something like this. This is something that will help everybody in the community. It will help workers, it'll help with employment, it will help businesses. So this is, you know, this is something that's really critical to us recovering from what we've been experiencing the last several months. I don't know, I'm open to answer any other questions at this point, but I will say, we brought this to the, not only to the tourist development council, which was very supportive, and our chair, Giles Malone, will be speaking, I know, in a minute from their perspective. But then we took it to the county commission. What the county commission has committed to is, because we heard that the track was an issue and having a state-of-the-art track was something that would be beneficial to the games, the TDC had approved $50,000 from our capital facilities fund to go towards finishing the track of Vera High School. That was also approved by the county commission. Then an additional amount of money was approved for some operational expenses. Originally, the amount was $50,000. During the time that we brought it to the county commission, Sheriff Ivy stood up and said, well, I have $30,000 in forfeiture funds that I need to do something with. I would like to commit those to this event. So $30,000 is coming from the sheriff and then another $20,000 from our operational budget at the tourist development office. Then additionally to that, the request was made to be able to use county facilities to hold these outdoor events particularly. And we asked for up to $50,000 in fee waivers from the Parks and Recreation Department of the county. That was approved. So that's, right now, that's where we are. We know that the games are now coming, the governor will be here tomorrow to do a press conference at 10 o'clock at Vera Regional Park. And of course, you are all invited to that. But we're very excited about it. It's a huge economic generator, it's a huge job generator for us, and it's something that we really need right now in a time post-COVID of an economic downturn.
Peter, I appreciate your conversation and giving us that update. I think where Mrs. McDougal was questioning is, is that there's a actual MOU that we've been exchanging. And Ms. McDougal, did you want to ask that question directly to him so that I didn't speak for you?
I have a question, a couple of questions. Can you refresh my memory of when these games will be held?
Yes, and they're targeting the last week of July and the first week of August. And we haven't nailed down all the dates yet because it really will depend on which sports will be coming. That's a bit fluid. So once we know that, then we'll be able to lock down exactly what facilities are needed and when they're needed by.
So what I'm hearing, which you rattled off some numbers here, so I just want to make sure I understand. So we had $50,000 towards the track. Where is the $30,000 that Sheriff Ivy is throwing in? Is that going to be?
That is.
Part of the track also? And then you talked about your $20,000 from the TDC budget. Is that all going towards our facility track?
The $20,000 from our budget and the $30,000 from the sheriff will be going to any operational expenses that the AAU will incur in order to hold the games here. There are a lot of expenses related to bringing in judges and umpires, things like that. So there's travel expenses, there are fees that they pay some of those people. So it's going to offset some of their expenses, their hard costs in terms of the operations of the games themselves.
Okay. So looking at the MOU, it appears that we can't charge anything. That, and then we, you are, the commissioners, putting in the commission, said they would give $50,000 towards our track. Well, our track, if I'm looking at the figures, is this correct, like $400,000? Is that what it is? I'm just curious where that money's coming from. We are in a very tight area right now, money-wise, as you well know. But also on top of that, I look at my two schools that also could use a new track and I, this is not quite equitable. I understand the benefit for our county. I do, I understand it. We have been hit very hard. But at the same time, what do I tell Cocoa Beach residents when they've been wanting a track forever? What do I tell Merritt Island, who couldn't borrow money from us and loan back like another school was able to do? I am concerned about that. So I just want to know where we're getting another $350,000 and how are we going to pay for this?
Ms. McDougal, for all fairness, he is with the TDC, the actual amount of money that we would allocate is going to be broken down by Ms. Han and where that all, he doesn't have access to numbers.
I just want him to know what the ramifications are for my district and people in my district.
And I would love to answer those questions, as I said, as far as the equity and the tracks and all the other pieces. But I don't think Mr. Cranus is here for that portion of the discussion. They made a philosophical decision to make Vera the target, not for any other reason, but it has one of the best facilities, they have the best size as far as a track, and they also have the money that has already been raised, already in hand for the rubberization that needed to be taken place. That was the justification behind that. And that's it. And so I can talk to those facts here in a minute. But Mr. Cranus, I was more concerned about the MOU because Ms. McDougal was talking, speaking directly to the MOU and some of the concessions and stuff like that, which is a great point. Is that more of a AAU conversation with Mr. Buchanan? Or can you speak to what the school district is allowed to collect based upon these games?
Sure. Yeah, I can speak to the MOU because we wrote that from our county attorney's office. So we had our county attorney assist us with drafting that contract that in our local, if you will. You know, we've done many of those. They're very common in terms of when we provide grant money to different entities for capital facilities particularly. That's how that MOU was drafted with that intent. It's really meant to define what the school board is agreeing to do and then what the TDC is willing to do. As far as the facility rentals, that is the request that's in that contract is to grant the AAU access to facilities with no fees associated with those facility usage. That's exactly what the county has done as well. We approved up to $50,000 in waiver of fees for all of our parks, venues that will be utilized as part of this. So that was, that was the same, basically, we're doing it, so we're asking the school board to do the same.
Ms. Duskovich, I believe you had questions for Mr. Cranus?
I need some clarification. So is there two sets of $50,000, 30 from the sheriff, 20 from the TDC, and an additional $50,000 for operational expenses? Or there's just a $50,000?
Correct. There's, so there's $50,000 that we're providing for the track, that comes from our capital facilities fund. And then there was an additional ask from the AAU of another $50,000 in operational expenses, of which, as it turned out, we're providing 20 of that and the sheriff is providing 30.
Okay, I, when I was taking down, I wrote down, I wrote down an extra, 50 for Vera, 50 in operational, and then I had 30 and 20. So that second 50 is wrong. So you said some of those operational expenses will be things like umpires and such. If we don't charge facility use agreements, is there a potential for any of those funds to go towards janitorial services and things of that nature that our district is going to have to provide?
You know, that is definitely a possibility. I would let Mr. Buchanan kind of speak to that because he's very familiar with what expenses they typically incur and what he believes those costs are going to be. But, you know, I'm certainly open to that.
And is anyone opposed to holding it at the satellite track? If there's issues that we can't work out getting the Vera track ready in time?
They, yeah, that would be a Stuart Buchanan conversation. We can't speak to him, that's their AAU. They have, that is a possibility. And, but I think that in the event, he can explain the reason behind why they came with Vera before satellite and everything else.
It makes sense, but if that's the last straw and that's what's holding us back ultimately from going through this, if we think everything else is fine, but we just can't get there because the quote's too high, I just want to know, are they opposed to?
They're also looking at Holy Trinity, MCC, and other locations for that second track to be.
Oh, yeah, Holy Trinity has a rubberized track.
They have a good one.
Okay. That does my questions, thank you.
Ms. Campbell, do you have questions for Mr. Cranus?
I do not.
I have a couple of questions specific to the MOU, Mr. Cranus. One of the, one of the things that sticks out to me in the MOU is that if we are unable to have the Vera track refinished prior to the start of the games, then in essence, we would have to pay back the $50,000 that the TDC is granting, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. And the reason for that is that those funds are designated for a specific purpose. So we typically work with capital projects all over the county and that's a standard part of our agreement. If for some reason the capital facility is not completed, it doesn't happen, then those funds are forfeited.
So if the decision is made to use a track other than Vera, I assume those funds would be forfeited as well?
Yes, ma'am.
And the other question that I had is, there in the MOU, you've addressed the facility use fees, I think, but there's also a requirement that anytime that we, anytime we advertise events, that we would have to list the TDC as a sponsor? Is that same requirement being passed? I guess my concern is, we are not hosting the event. So we don't have control over who the AAU is listing, or the Junior Olympics, or however all of that works, is listing as sponsors.
Sure. So that also is a standard clause in our contracts with capital facilities. What we would ask is that a sign be posted near or in front of the facility that was constructed, acknowledging that in part, the facility was constructed with TDC funding. So that's what that clause refers to. So that's what that clause refers to. Again, that's a standard clause that we do with all our capital facilities grants.
Okay. And then the other question that I have, the discussion from the county commission indicated that, if I recall correctly, Viera High School was only short $25,000 from the cost of the track. And Mr. Susan made a commitment at that meeting that the district would be willing to cover anything that, they were anticipating $25,000 in a fundraiser, and if they fell short of that, that the district would cover those dollars. The MOU reads specifically that the district will be willing to cover whatever additional dollars there are, not just the gap in that fundraiser, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
If I can speak to that? The conversation that was going back and forth about the actual fundraiser was that in the event that they did not make the actual fundraiser, the county commission was concerned about us not being able to make it, and that's why they put in the reverter clause of the $50,000. The intent of the conversation was not to have the Viera school, the school district make up the difference of a fundraiser for Viera. That would never be. So if that was communicated, I apologize for that. What it was is there was a hang-up over how much money was already in hand for this fundraiser. And the fundraiser was supposed to finish out on July 15th. And so everybody was moving so fast. And the question was, is if we only have $10,000 in right now from the fundraiser, can you get to the final fundraiser at the $25,000? The conversation was, there might be an opportunity that the school itself may be able to pay for that, not the district. And I apologize if that was communicated that way. Viera High School has internal athletic funds that they can use in the event that they wanted to make up a gap. And that would be up to them, again, not myself, but the school district to communicate and do those things. So that was the conversation. Since then, the Viera Cross Eat My Cross 5K has not only hit their mark, but they've now exceeded it and they're into the green, they're into the other side. So that's no longer a moot conversation. They're also extending it to July 1st instead of being June 15th. They're bringing the funds, if we approve to do this, down to the school district so that they can move forward. And then they're going to fundraise from here for the rest of the time to offset the cost of the actual other expenses that have been incurred. So I apologize if it sounded like the school district would do that because that was not the intent. The intent was to say that internal school funds, sometimes, when they have them, they'll make up that gap. So if I could clarify that piece.
Ms. Campbell?
Ms. Belford, I don't necessarily have a question for our guest, but I just would like to make a comment on what we're talking about right now. Is it, I'd really love to hear from Ms. Han sooner rather than later, but it concerns me greatly that we have this MOU with the clause that says, if we don't get it done, this doesn't happen, and the $50,000, the wrong hook for the $50,000, when we're, like, if we vote on Tuesday, I've looked at the calendar, the six weeks, that's, that's all there is. You know, the six weeks puts us out, I believe, to July the 28th, or somewhere in that window. There's, there's no leeway. And we're in the rainy season and hurricane season, and I just, I'm not super comfortable with the idea of signing ourselves to that commitment of that particular track and expending those funds with so little wiggle room. So I'd really love to hear from Ms. Han, so we can, because we have a lot of really important, this is important. We have a lot of really important things. I don't want to get sidetracked off of, I mean, I'm willing to stay till whenever, maybe with a short lunch break. But I, I would like us to keep moving through this if we can.
Can, can we answer, Ms. McDougal? Mr. Krantis, the question was on the table. We want, if we want, one of the main points in this discussion is, is that our athletic budgets, which have been decimated from not being able to fundraise, and quite frankly, they're not even sure if they can even host some of the operational things that they're supposed to do. They're looking for the concessions, parking, those kind of things. And Ms. McDougal raised a great point, that if, if in the event we're not able to get those funds, then the argument that this is helping our athletic programs is moot. Is it the intent of the TDC and the AAU to not give us the concessions or the parking and those kind of externalities? Can you speak specifically to that? Because I think that's the question that we've been asking. Or if Mr. Buchanan-
Yeah, I mean, I think honestly, I think that's a question best asked of Mr. Buchanan. We obviously, as a TDC, we're, you know, a local organization. We would be happy for revenue to be generated to the, to the local schools from this. But ultimately, Mr. Buchanan and the AAU control the games and would be the one to respond to that question.
Can we, can we ask before Ms. Sue Han comes on, just Rusty, to give us those quick answers? Is that okay? Can we do that? I know that we're trying to push through, but that, to me, that's a huge deal. Like, if we're not getting the concessions and we're not getting those kind of things, then I can't make an argument why to impact our entire schools. Does that make sense to you?
Do we have any additional questions for Mr. Krantis before we transition to Mr. Buchanan for two questions? Thank you for your time, Mr. Krantis. Is Mr. Buchanan available?
Thank you very much. I believe he is, and I think the phone number is-
Mr. Krantis, don't, don't repeat Rusty's cell phone over the phone. This is being streamed live. We're going to call him. We have his phone number. Thank you.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Ms. Rusty?
Hi, Mr. Buchanan. This is Misty Belford, the chair of the school board. Thank you so much for joining us this morning.
Oh, no, I appreciate, I appreciate you guys kind of squeezing this in. Thank you so much for listening.
Absolutely. So we have two quick questions for you. Ms. Duskevich, do you want to repeat your question regarding the operational funds going toward janitorial?
Or you can just-
So, Mr. Buchanan, one of the questions that came up was, in lieu of the request for us to waive our facility use fees, would there be a consideration on your part of the $50,000 that you all are getting for operational costs, for some of that to be allocated toward our district expenses for additional janitorial services, et cetera?
Well, what I, I would say that certainly janitorial services are a key component. For it to be a good deal needs to be a good deal for everyone. I was listening out here in the courtyard to your conversations, and absolutely, we would pay janitorial stuff. I mean, that's an expense, that's an operating expense, and I would not want the district to have to bear any of that burden. As far as concession goes, absolutely, 100% concessions belong back to whichever schools that we decide we can use in this. And I've had some very good conversations, I did have a nice conversation this morning with Chris Moore, trying to walk through what those possible needs would look like. And I will give you a little update if you'd like. And as far as parking, traditionally, no one has ever charged for parking with this event other than some of the, the big convention centers that this event typically goes to. So yes, that would be a revenue source for, for the schools as well. So yes, we would pay for custodial. Yes, you get the concessions. And yes, if you wanted to charge for parking at those schools, that's certainly not an issue. We, and if you'll just bear with me just one minute, and let me just tell you why I'm even here. Everybody's got their own reasons. I know Peter and Giles are here because of the economic impact that this would have. This event started in 1967. Hubert Humphrey started the Junior Olympic Games, so everybody's probably heard of him. And it's traditionally gone to big cities, Houston, Detroit, Greensboro. And those cities pay an exorbitant amount of money in a bid fee. The bid fee, the cash and amenities package just to get the games in their community is around $1 million. And they typically have an operating budget of $3 or $4 million. And they have two or three years to prepare for this. But what happened was, as Virginia Beach and Norfolk State said, "We've got concerns over our venues and our governor's office not being supportive. We don't think we can do this." So the option was do nothing and allow this whole program to not go forward for a year, piecemeal it out to different places around the country, or try to do something. And let me just, if you'll bear with me one minute, I've been involved in sports my whole life. Prior to the Atlanta Olympic Games, we did the torch run through the state of Florida. We coordinated that. And President Bush sent me a very nice letter afterwards, and he said, "You know, sports is such a key component to young kids' lives. We learn through sports life lessons. We learn teamwork, sportsmanship, fair play, goal-setting, hard work and reward. They may not be professional athletes, but they'll be professionals at something, and those sports lessons will serve them well in their adult life." And for, for almost 25, 30 years now, that had kind of been my mantra. Sports is a tool for our children. Well, I've done a lot of work with the United States State Department in diplomatic sports missions. I did one in Afghanistan, 2012. Two years ago, I did one to the Republic of Kosovo. And I'm talking with the Prime Minister of Kosovo, and I'm trying to be as intelligent as I can, as smart as I can, and talk about these life lessons through sport. And he stopped me, and he said, "You know, sports has a unique platform to literally change the world because when kids are playing sports, they don't see their differences, they see the sport." He said, "Read Nelson Mandela and change your mantra that sports, through children, have the ability to change the world generationally." So my motivation is a little different. I get a paycheck from the AAU every two weeks. I sure don't need to be trying to cram what is a two-year process with a lot of money into something like this. But I felt it was at least my mission to reach out and see, did I have solid partners that thought that this opportunity come together and bavard? It did once before. In 1996, we moved it here after Houston had some issues. So I'm back in the mix, not, not because I want to be, but I feel like I probably have to be. So I did reach out and said, "I can't do this by myself." I asked the Tourist Development Council, and they said, "We're all in. We'll support it." I went to the Board of County Commissioners, "We're all in. We'll support it. The sheriff, we're all in. We'll support it." And a piece of this that we haven't really talked about is the Sunshine State Games, which brings the governor's component into that. There will be opportunity for all of our kids locally and to compete in the AAU Junior Olympic Games without having to qualify. And that part's going to be managed by the Sunshine State Game. So we got the buy-in from the governor. So I appreciate you indulging me at least the why I'm here. I sure don't need this headache. But I felt it was my mission to at least see if it was possible and still be. What would my ask be? We need a track. Viera would be perfect. It would be a beautiful place. It would be the absolute, you know, pinnacle of a brand-new facility. But our track and field committee and some other folks said, "You know, what if it's not ready? What if it rains? What if this?" We need a fallback. We need a number-two spot. And yes, we did look at satellite. And if Viera, for some reason, were not ready, or the funding did not work, satellite is a possibility. And as I think Mr. Susan said, we're also looking at maybe Holy Trinity or MCC. We'd prefer to use satellite because we'd like those funds that we mentioned to go back to those, those partners with the school board. We do need gymnasiums. And Dr. Mullins spoke about the possibility of bringing basketball. It has not been formally announced yet, but the summer national championships in basketball that are traditionally at ESPN, Wide World of Sports, will be displaced because the NBA is moving in there. So we have an opportunity to bring in an additional component of basketball. And when I spoke on the phone this morning with the facilities folks, we did say that the ask would potentially include some gymnasiums for basketball, maybe four or five for four or five days. So our total ask from the school board would be a track. And then gymnasiums, depending on how we do the schedule and what was available, we have not even began to go through that process yet, but it would be anywhere from four to seven gymnasiums for somewhere between five to seven days. And of course, obviously, we would, we would ask you guys to partner with us, just like everyone else is doing. So I appreciate your indulging me, but that's, that's kind of my, my reason for being here and answer your two questions.
Thank you, Mr. Buchanan. I have one additional question for you. Do you all charge entry fees for people attending the games?
There is an entry fee. Traditionally, that has gone back to the sport committee that's hosting the event for their operational expenses. Because this is kind of a combination between Sunshine State Games and the AAU, we've not really discussed how that division would work. But typically, those dollars go back just into the operations of whatever sports committee is putting on that. And they are tremendous expenses. The timing equipment alone for this event is $20,000 to rent. That's the, I mean, it's just insane, the amount of expenses involved with this.
Thank you, Mr. Buchanan. Do any additional board members have questions for Mr. Buchanan? All right. Thank you so much for taking the time out to answer our questions today. We appreciate it, Mr. Buchanan. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Board members, is it your wish to have Ms. Han answer questions on funding at this point?
Yes, please. Thank you, Ms. Duskevich.
No routes found.
Do you think we would get to pick what gyms? I mean, certainly Viera. I mean, how do they do that?
Mao High would be a great gym for it.
I would ask, I would ask the principals through Dr. Mullins to do that. We don't know what their schedules are.
Well, not me personally, but, I mean, are they going to pick, you know, with the-
No, no, no. They, we-
I've been in conversation with Mr. Buchanan about that, and I have more information I need to share with the board.
Yeah. But I have, well, I need, that's the other piece that I have for this whole thing.
Hi.
Hello, Ms. Han. Thank you for joining us. We had some board members that had some questions for you regarding the track situation at Viera. I think, Ms. Campbell, you were the one to initially request Ms. Han's input?
Yeah, I just, if you could just, the email that was printed and given to us with the most recent quote, and then just if you could speak to the timing concerns.
Yes, ma'am. If you don't mind, I'd like to walk through that email and just kind of give you the perspective on how we got to this particular proposal from Morton Smith. As you know, this is a super tight schedule, so I think the project initially started with, hey, what does it cost to rubberize the track? And so there were some numbers floating around in the $200,000 range. However, as we started to look at the current condition of the track, it makes absolutely no sense to rubberize the track, given its current condition. The track was rated fair back in 2018. However, there's recently been a sprinkler break that affected the track surface, so it's had to be patched. So that, the track is, is not, it is, it is in a condition where we should not be rubberizing the surface without resurfacing the track. So given that, we were talking about how we could actually implement this project in such a quick timeframe. And in my professional opinion, the only way to really do that is to engage Morton Smith, who is already on site. They're doing the Viera High School Facility Renewal Project. So we asked them to develop a proposal to actually execute the project as a design builder. In that way, they are bringing in the designer, who we actually need to do design plans for the resurfacing and the rubberization so that there is a standard against which the performance of the subcontractors are measured. So we'll need design drawings for that. We also need design drawings for permitting. So that is incorporated into their proposal as part of their work as a design builder. There is a component in the proposal to resurface the track. So that is a milling where basically you chew up the existing asphalt and you lay down a new surface. There's a component then that is to rubberize the track. There are two different proposals for rubberizing the track. You'll see those on pages three and four. Page three's proposal is cheaper. That is a pervious surface, meaning that water can seep through the surface. Page four, that is an impervious surface. It's about $60,000 more. That is a better, long-lasting solution, but it also takes a little bit longer to get that second impervious coating done on the, on the track. So either solution will work from a long-term maintenance perspective. That initial investment of $60,000 upfront, if we can do it within the timeframe, is a better long-term solution. Both proposals offer a five-year warranty. So either way we go on the rubberization offers a five-year warranty. So the proposal from Morton Smith is a not-to-exceed proposal. It's kind of a standard proposal, similar to what you see for our other construction projects. expenses. Included in that proposal is some temporary protection in the event that there's light rain. But I am also concerned if we have a significant amount of rainfall in the next six weeks, that certainly is going to impact our ability to deliver the track, which causes me to share the board's concern about the $50,000 reverter clause. I think once we make the commitment to do the track, that $50,000 needs to be part of the equation. Because we can't control the weather any more than the TDC can control the weather, but we have made that commitment to provide the track within the best of our abilities. And we have essentially stood up the team to be able to deliver this in the time that the AAU needs the track completed. In terms of the funding, my understanding as of today is we have about $210,000 available to us. That includes $143,000 that Vieira High School has raised, an additional $17,000 in commitments from Vieira High School's fundraising arm, and then the $50,000 from the TDC. My understanding is that there's ongoing fundraising, so there may be additional resources. But in terms of where we stand today, that feels to me like the commitment that's available. So if we're working from an estimate of doing the impervious track of about $500,000, that leaves us with about $290,000 that would fall on the school district. So in looking at our cash flow abilities, I can support that investment based on previously allocated capital funds to Facilities Department. Now, this time of year, I typically will save my capital resources in the event that I have facilities issues that come up that need to be addressed, usually as part of our construction projects. And you'll see some of those on your agenda for June 16th, where we, and when we get into our facility projects, there's something that happens and we need to put $100,000 or $200,000 towards a project. So I have the cash flow available to be able to support that. From the perspective of actually funding, a plan to fund the project, I had looked at the capital outlay worksheet that we discussed at the board workshop a week or so, a couple weeks ago, I believe that Pam handed a copy out to you. And our plan was for the anticipated $500 and something thousand dollars coming into the school district over the 96% collection rate, that we would first allocate resources towards the O'Galli Locker Room AC project. In looking at the proposal for that project and talking with our contractor, we are not going to be able to execute that project quickly because it involves tearing out ceilings and there's a lot of work that really can't be done when school is in session, coupled with a, what I understand to be about a 12-month material lead time. So I won't need the cash for the O'Galli Locker Room project for quite some time. And therefore, I can support the track if the board chooses to move forward with this with my current cash available. And then as the revenue comes in for the, for next year, I'll be able to execute the O'Galli project as well. So that would be the funding plan to basically insert this track project into the mix for the capital allocation out of next year's budget. But I do have the cash flow to support it this year if the board would like to move forward with it.
Board members have additional questions for Ms. Han?
Real quick.
Are you questioning or are you giving additional information?
Ms. Han. Just Ms. Han. Ms. Han, in your indication, I think a lot of us, including me, don't ever want to put the district in a position where we're on the hook for $50,000 that, you know, because we didn't get across the finish line. In your conversation with Morton Smith, what is their level of confidence that they could get this project done?
The level of confidence is very high other than the weather. So if we have significant weather events, that's, we won't make it. And I just want to be brutally honest about that. And I feel, you know, a little bit uncomfortable taking that risk on, fully on the school board's side, based on the fact that this project has come to us so late in the game. This is really the only way to get it done, and we've got the team in place to do it, Mr. Susan. But if there's significant weather where they can't work on the track, that will impact our ability to deliver the track.
Thank you, Ms. Han. I'm finished. Thank you.
I have a question. Ms. Askew.
Ms. Han, can you tell me a couple of things? I'm pretty sure I know the answer, but I just want to be sure. The quote that we received from AstroTurf Corporation was around $200,000, and that's because we, they didn't, which is strange, they go out and not realize that the track underneath was in bad shape. Why is that one $200,000 and Morton Smith is $400,000? That's question number one.
Well, if you look, if you look at the Horton Smith proposal on page three, the rubberized track service, surface is about $200,000. So it is just the quote, the subcontractor quote to do the rubberization.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify and make that, make sure that was a true statement before we move ahead on some of this. My next question is, is the Satellite High Track impervious? Or which, which one of these quotes, the 423 or the 493 closely resembles what Satellite High has?
I would have to tell you, I don't know at this point. I anticipated someone would ask that question, and I just did not have a chance to run it down this morning.
Can I speak to that real quick? I can...
Sure.
So your satellite, as far as impervious and not impervious, I'm not sure. But your satellite track is what's known as a latex finish. What Vieira is saving for is a polyurethane finish. And the reason for that is, is that the reconditioning, kind of what astronauts going through, process is much more expensive on the backend for your latex finish. So they were raising the extra amount that they needed to get to the polyurethane.
Okay. And the polyurethane makes it impervious? That would make sense.
I don't know, no, no, no. I don't know the difference between impervious or pervious. Like, that piece, I don't know. But I do know that the finish that they were going to is replica of some of the college school, everything else. So they wanted that higher piece. There was another conversation where you spoke to the difference in the quotes. So there's a little bit of a difference, is that Ms. Han, and rightfully so, wanted to bring in a general contractor to oversee it, so that she could get the project in the amount of time. That quote that you had from that company is them working as the general contractor, meaning that they would come in, they would do the work and everything else. So your original quote is like roughly around $200,000, and the milling and all that stuff's $134. And they do tracks everywhere else, but they have not done a track this fast before. So I think Ms. Han, rightfully so, brought Horton Smith in, which increased the amount of cost. But it was so that we could solidify it. So if you're looking at the difference between the two quotes, I think that part of it is, is that rightfully so, Ms. Sue Han brought in Horton Smith to try to solidify it as strong because they're a great partner of ours and they can get the project done, if that makes sense to you.
It does. So Ms. Han, my next question is, are you, I can't remember if you were in your position when we put the satellite track in. But how much did the district, because I think it's important because of the things Ms. McDougal brought up, that it's equitable? How much did the district put in towards the satellite track originally and then through matching funds? Do you know that? And do you know the breakout of that?
Let's see. The school belief chipped in about $73,000. Satellite High Track Club, $45,000. City of Indian Harbor, $5,000. Delora, $5,000. The SIP matching funds, they went through that process, which is in the fall, so it's not timely enough for this particular project. Was about $25,000. City of Satellite Beach contributed $30,000. So it was a, it was a community investment as well.
But did the district resurface? Because a good portion of this new quote is resurfacing. And I remember, I feel like I remember when we did this, that the district said they were going to pay for the resurfacing because that was maintenance to what was there. But then the community, et cetera, needed to come up with what it was to rubberize it because the district wasn't going to take that on because it wasn't equal to the others. So...
Yes, that is correct. We paid for the, we paid for the resurfacing.
And in every case that we've ever done with any enhancement, it has never been upon the responsibility of the school to pay for the enhancement piece like that. We've always given the base. So we've always, so like satellite was $100, and it actually was about $30,000 less because they have the latex as opposed to the polyurethane. And, but, but when I talked to Coach Butler about it, because this was, I mean, I literally tried to do as much, you know, because of equity, I wanted to know all the questions. He said they raised inwards of about $176,000, and then the district took care of the rest of it. But if you remember, there was also the expansion of two extra lanes there. There was extra work that was needed. And I don't know that exact number of the delta that the district paid for, but just like Sue Han, Ms. Han said...
I'm trying to compare apples to apples. We can't give Vieira $190,000. You have that information, Dr. Mullins?
Yeah, we went back to the board agenda item, and the board committed an additional, in addition to the school initiated project matching funds, which was $25,000, the board approved an additional $25,000 that came from the federally connected allocation that had been set aside for special projects. So the board contribution to that...
But that, not to interrupt you, but I do want to be clear on that. That was allocated funds that each individual board member had to spend on our schools. I know that sounds probably different to the public, but the board as a whole did not approve that $25,000 going to Satellite High Track. I chose to take the funds that, and I don't want to get into semantics here, but, but there's a difference there because every board member here, besides the two that weren't here, but that every board seat here spent that same amount of money and chose where to spend it. If I would have chose to upgrade the gym or, you know, put more workstations in, Satellite would not have gotten that $25,000 towards the track. Sorry to interrupt you, but I know there's people watching right now at home.
Sure. No, I'm just going by the board agenda minutes that were, that come from December 12.
That's just the back, that's back story information. I don't, I just don't feel like in my apples-to-apples, that $25,000 is apples that the board as a whole said, we want to take district general capital funds and take them over.
It was very clearly specific funds from that designated pot of money. That is, that's my understanding as well.
Okay.
And those pieces, as we moved forward, were to make up the delta to get to the rubberization portion of it, not to pay for what the milling in the surface was done.
So the question is, do you, Dr. Mullins or Ms. Han, if you're still on it, know what the cost is to repave it before? Because the district paid for that for satellite.
I believe, Ms. Han, are you still on the phone? I believe that's the $130,000, $40,000 milling and asphalt resurfacing. Did I say million? $130,000.
I know what you meant. So $130,000 for satellite, $190 is what you need for on top?
Hold on.
But can we count the $50,000?
If I can interrupt you, just to be clear, the $134,000 in the Horton Smith proposal is the subcontractor bid. So you would need to add on top of that all of the general condition costs, bonds, insurance, and things like that. So top of my head, that's probably in the $160,000, $170,000 range, fully burdened. The satellite track, we paid $205,000 for the resurfacing, and then we added the two lanes, as Mr. Susan stated, and that was funded by the school at $73,600.
So we'd be comparing the $205,000 to the $190. Is that, does everyone else see it that way? Or is it...
And I did want to make it known that Vieira did not ask, when they were, when they were fundraising, they did not ask to use the district match, which was afforded to Satellite also. Those families raised that extra. So when you look at the $50,000 reverter clause, 25 of that normally, if this was under normal conditions, they would have applied for, under the same auspices. That's all.
Ms. Han, when you told me the funding originally, you said $143 Vieira raised, and then I, the next one I got was $50,000 TDC, but there was a number in between there. I didn't catch that.
There's, I've understood, Mr. Susan, perhaps you can speak to this, that there was another $17,000 that was raised by one of the community partners to Vieira High School.
I, yes.
In talking with Ms. Robinson.
Ms. Robinson asked at an earlier date what the fundraiser was, and at that time, it was $10,000, which made up the $143,000. Since then, yesterday, I asked Micah Costa what the, what the input was for how much money, and they said they had now succeeded in delivering the $25,000 total. So if you're looking at what you see there, add another $17,000 to that, and that's where, so you add your $143 plus the $50 plus the $17. And that will cover the rubberization. And I'll, and I'll just be honest with you, the fundraiser hasn't finished, and the ultimate biggest portion of a fundraiser is the last seven days. So there's some other components to this. Both Rockledge High School is trying to get this track also because they're going to use it as a fundraising source. There's a community effort behind this, stuff that I wanted to talk to. But when you're talking about them raising the money by themselves for this, they've made the delta for the rubberization minus the $50,000. I would almost argue, if given another two weeks, they could get that $50,000 too. But they're just working to try to get to that resurfacing. That's all.
That's all the questions I have right now, Ms. Spelver.
Ms. Spelver. I'm just taking a look at our capital outlay worksheet, Ms. Han, that we discussed at our workshop, our capital budget workshop. And I'm seeing that we had five high school track resurfacing projects listed there. Four don't have the condition Astronaut has poor. The four being Cocoa Beach, O'Galli, Mel High, and Rockledge. Are those failed tracks?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So here's my concern, board, is that we're talking about, you know, Ms. Han says she has the money. If we, if we, you know, want to go this direction because of the O'Galli Locker Room situation not being able to be done this summer, you know, pushing that off. But my concern is, you know, when I look at this list that we all looked at and agreed upon, that if there, if the money is not to be used because it can't be used this summer, that there is a host, there are a host of projects on this list of things that need to be done. And while at a certain time, the district has committed to funds for track resurfacing, our priorities are the ones that are failing now. And so I congratulate Vieira for all the great work they've done in getting their track done, but I just don't feel comfortable with us as a board leapfrogging over these five schools who have failing and poor tracks that need to be surfaced, and we haven't even committed funds to them yet because we don't have them, to get this done at Vieira for this wonderful event. But that we already have a facility that if we host this, can already today, without worrying about weather, without worry about potentially losing $50,000, without worry about an equity issue of, you know, whether they chose us or not, you know, we have a school that's ready to go. So if we, I just feel like, if I can just cut to the chase of our discussion, I just feel like if we're going to agree to be part of the hosting, and, you know, we want to be team players with the rest of the county, I just feel like let's, let's not make it complicated. We have a track, we have a facility that can be used right now. We don't have to make it complicated. We don't have to take funds away from one kid to give it to another kid. We, let's, let's just do what is the simple solution.
Can I answer to that? So that's a great question because that is the ultimate issue that I wrestled with with this whole thing. I am bringing forward a school who, if we can quite frankly say, is on the high socioeconomic status, at the same time as two schools that are in my own district do not have tracks and they are on the lower socioeconomics. So I wrestled with this. I even met with the track team and the track fundraising team that I'm a part of for Rockledge. And I talked to multiple people at O'Galli. And I said, let's walk this thing through because I don't want this to happen with it looking like all of a sudden you've got an Emerald up here and these poor people have been, I mean, let's look at Rockledge. 30 years they've been playing down there. They've been the Cape Coast Conference Champions for track multiple times and never had an operable track. That is ridiculous, right? I agree with you 100%. Now here's where it came in to be. Cocoa Beach, Rockledge, O'Galli, none of them, under the current funding structure, are going to get resurfaced in the next 18 months. In the next 18 months, there is no money for any of those tracks to be resurfaced. At the same time, Cocoa Beach, Rockledge are trying to fundraise to put in their polyurethane finishes. So there is, when I, when I sat there and I said, okay, so we're looking at making this argument over, they don't have it, and Vieira's getting theirs, I understand that. But what one parent brought up to me from Rockledge, which was this, by Vieira getting their track, we can utilize that track to fundraise for our polyurethane. They have $120,000 delta that they need to make up. And if we're going to resurface their track first at 18, in 18 months, they won't make that delta unless they have the ability to use this track. So I called the Vieira parents, and they were a part of the fundraising for the 5Ks that they've been doing. I called the, and I just, from a 30,000-foot view, said, how does this work? How can we do this? And so the Rockledge could utilize the facility in a tournament style and raise $30,000 for their own rubberization. So that when we do go to get that track done, they are ready to do the rubberization, and Cocoa Beach can do the same thing. The issue that we have is we're... and raise $30,000 for their own rubberization. So that when we do go to get that track done, they are ready to do the rubberization and Cocoa Beach can do the same thing. The issue that we have is we're fundamentally looking at this as a, should we pay or shouldn't we pay, which is great. We have never asked a school or a parent organization to pay for the milling of our track. The main argument is, we don't want Viera to get it before the other schools because they're on the list of, of qualified. But if we could enhance the other programs through the use of the Viera facility, that's where I was, then I was okay. And that's when I sat there and I called the Rockledge parents. I called them all and I said, is this a viable option? I mean, because the last thing I want to do is, is announce that we're going to do this and then turn around and get blasted from you guys. And they said, absolutely, we need that track to help out. We're looking forward to working with the Viera parents on raising for that fund, that 5K. And I was more than excited because for the first time, I've got literally two schools that hate each other, whose parents are going to work together to try to, to, to create something beautiful for both schools. And when I saw that, that's the argument that I made. And so when you speak to the Cocoa Beach piece, I also looked at that and I said, well, wait a minute, because those guys are, they're fundraising, the Kiwanis Club is working really hard, but they're not there yet. So they're not at the point where they can make their delta to have the polyurethane finish. They're just not. And I didn't understand that this was not brought up. Like Matt Susan didn't go to these guys and say, bring it to Viera. They wanted the Viera complex because they didn't, because it's the largest, it's in the location for all of the hotels, for all the restaurants. Everything else made sense. So that's the equity piece that we talked about. This is an opportunity. Because if Rockledge doesn't get the opportunity to use the Viera track, they ultimately will not be able to polyurethane their track for another year at least. They have been fundraising for nine years and they've raised $40,000. This will give them almost 15 to 20 and the 5K will give them 25. They're going to raise $40,000 with the Viera parents towards their track. That's what this argument was about when I came across it. And that's, that's the ultimate reason. And I, and I, and I can't tell you anymore about that piece. I do want you to tell you that Viera is literally on the next rung. So you have your first four, they're the next ones. And the sprinkler break has made theirs inoperable. So Sue's going to have to go out there and redo that track, a portion of it anyway, and expend, expend cost to go there too.
I do appreciate that, Mr. Susan. I do appreciate the cooperation between the schools. But I just, considering the timeframe that we have, I, that's just too much. It's, it's too much for me. And I, while those couple of schools seem to be, like you said, having a spirit of cooperation and encouragement, I appreciate that. But I don't know that the rest of the county would see it the same way, especially considering what we're risking by trying to fit this tight timeline.
And I, and I understand that 100%. Like, so two years ago, I was out trying to fundraise and throw sod down at O'Gally High School so that we could have safe sod for the high school. And at the same time, Palm Bay's football field was put into inoperable use. And we went and paid $700,000 to redo their entire surface. Was not on our capital budget, was not a part of our allocations. Do you know what everybody said about that? Then you go to Merit, go to Melbourne. Melbourne's the same thing, not on our capital expenditures, not on anything, gets a failed football field, and then literally $700,000 we rush last summer to put in.
But we, that's being paid back. That is part of the payback plan. And if Ms. Susan, Ms. Hand's still on the phone, they have a 10-year plan to pay that back minus the credit that we give them for, for having turf, which means our maintenance teams don't have to go out there and mow.
And at no time have we asked even for that option to have the 10-year buyback. We have allowed other schools to have an opportunity, which I totally supported, without a doubt. When Melbourne came up, when you had your Merritt Island, when we needed to do the concession stands, I made the motion, the bathrooms, I made the motion for a school that's not even in my district because that was something that John Craig wanted. Like we, as a school district and a school board, holistically, in a group, have been doing this in different places for different groups the whole time. And this is an opportunity. The opportunity to even have a 10-year payback, that, I guarantee you, if somebody walked across and said to, to, to Viera right now, hey, would you think about that? That's an option that they would probably take. And if you wanted to put it on the $50,000 reverter, they would probably be able to do that. They hold a 5K, they raised $30,000. So if you're having trouble with that piece of it, then why don't we take, if it seems like there's not enough support for it, why don't you ask Viera High School and them if there's an opportunity for them to make up the $50,000, if that's the crunch on it?
If it's more than that, Mr. Susan, and I, I mean, I don't, I don't want to keep going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. We have a solution, we have a place we can host. And honestly, we have some people in our community that are going to have a problem with us hosting it to begin with. Because while we're saying, hey, concession stands, there are people still in our community that are concerned with thousands of people coming into our community and we're going to, we're going to have concession stands. That's our students, our staff, our volunteers that we're, you know, we don't have protocols in place for how to run our concession stands in a pandemic. You know, I, I'm, we're going to play ball and we're going to, you know, it looks like we're, we're moving to cooperate, but I just don't see why this has to be so much more complicated when we already have a facility. And Satellite's not my school. I, I don't, I'm not territorial. If this, if we were talking about the same thing with one of my school's tracks, I, I would be sitting here and say the same thing. We've got six weeks period till this thing's supposed to start and that's, that's how, we're, we're giving ourselves no wiggle room. And we're committing funds that I don't see in the list of priorities. So it's not about, let's not let Viera get theirs before everybody else does this. We've already established our priorities. I don't feel comfortable reshuffling our priorities and putting something on the list that wasn't even on the list when we already have something right now ready to go.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
Ms. McDougal has been trying to get in on what I was.
I think we could go on for a long time on this topic. And I know it's on our agenda on the 16th. And I'm just wondering if we could move on because there's so much more to talk about. I think it is important. I think we do want to support this organ, the AAU, did I get that right? I forgot the U, AAU. So we do, because sports is important. I don't think any one of us here is denying that sports is important. I agree with most of us. I, I mean, Ms. Campbell has a great point. You have a great point. Would this be wonderful for our county? Absolutely. I am worried about the pandemic, as you know. But at the same time, we do have a facility in Satellite. So I think we're kind of beating a dead horse at this point. I think, yeah, it's just like, how are we going to make this work for the organization and for us? And I wonder if we can move this until the 16th so we can get on to the rest of our agenda. I'm just asking that question.
I think that the AAU needs to know if we have, if it is in our capacity to, I think Ms. Hand is trying to figure out some things. And I don't know, Ms. Hand, if you're still on the phone, can you communicate to us if this is a direction that you need today? Or if that's something that we can wait until Tuesday and have this discussion again and do it?
We can't vote on this today, Mr. Susan.
Right, no, 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 I know, but I just wanted to know if Ms. Hand needed something.
We are going to prepare the contract documents, if that's the sense of the board. Is that, that in addition to the MOU with the TDC or the AAU, I'm, I'm not sure what, what the document is. There'll, there'll be the MOU, but we also have to approve the contract modifications on Tuesday if we're to move forward with this. So I would be putting the contract documents on the board agenda and we would be starting between now and Tuesday to kind of do some preparatory work. So we would be ready to start working on Tuesday.
And, and that's specific to the track, Ms. Hand, but the other, but the other AAU, you know, they, they're trying to figure out facilities and all that stuff. That's not a time certain. If we decide to punt this thing for discussion down to Tuesday, since we can't give you board direction now, were you with the intent that you were going to move on a lot of stuff beforehand? Or is it that this would not make a timeline change in the events?
Well, the work I would be doing is preparing the contract for the board to vote on relative to the track. The MOU, I believe Mr. Gibbs is handling that, or Dr. Mullins.
And so I think that, but, but you, you don't want to expend a lot of energy if this board is not in favor of going out and utilizing the Viera track. And since it seems that Ms. Campbell's being held up on a couple of issues, Ms. Campbell, would you entertain giving the opportunity to try to figure out some creative funding that puts this not in the middle of this? Meaning that if we, opportunity to give Viera the opportunity to come back and say that they'll cover the reverter clause over a 10-year piece, would you entertain that thought process in the event that those things are taken care of, that they would go? Or is it that you would not do that, even if those, those issues came about?
I just feel like we're having this conversation because of the opportunity of AAU to come. And I don't think we, I don't think we even have to. While I understand why it's a great opportunity for Viera to take advantage, I just don't think, considering the timeframe, that it's reasonable.
And if we, for some reason, if AAU decides to go to MCC, to Holy Trinity, and they don't go to our surface, which is a possibility, that piece of those revenue sources is about $3,000 a day for about a 10-year period. Did you factor that into your conversation or your thought process?
It looks like they're ready to go to Satellite.
He just said there's three opportunities to go to.
Well, I think maybe some of that has contention on whether this board is willing to have them in our facility.
May I, Ms. Alfred, and Staskovic? My biggest concern at this point is the weather. I mean, it has been raining for weeks. What makes us think this is going to stop raining for the next six weeks for us to put this in? I don't see how it's possible. Mr. Susan, I want to support you because it's a free $50,000 coming towards us to get you guys over the finish line. I understand that 100%. But Ms. Campbell was very, she just made it so simple instead of arguing about all this. Satellite is, I just was up here, I just texted the city manager, I just texted the school. Are you able? Are you willing? Yes, we just need time to prepare. And so if we kick it down the line and say, you're back up in case it doesn't come through, now they're not preparing, the city's not preparing for the parking at the Schecter Center and, and different things. So Satellite's willing and able, according to principal and city manager. It's an, it's an easy answer. I can't imagine it's not going to pour rain for the next six weeks.
Well, I just looked, up until the 24th, we have a percentage of rain every day. So, and it usually happens in the afternoon or Thursday, but yeah.
Say that again, the weather looks like it's going to rain. It hasn't not rained in the last three weeks.
I mean, it really is, we've got rain projected all the way through the 24th. This is far as I'll go for my, on my phone, but yeah.
Ms. Staskovic, if there was an opportunity for Viera to assume the debt of the 50,000 that you're mostly concerned about, would you change your mind? I mean, I, look, I want this thing to go to Satellite. And if you would have came to me in the beginning and they would have said, no, the Viera's, we want to go to Satellite, I, I just, I want to try to make an opportunity for this. Would you entertain the thought if you could take the delta of the 50% and ask for kind of what we've done in other instances?
If I may, Mr. Susan, I, I didn't realize the discussion was going to go in the direction of the school assuming financial obligation with the, with the discussion of paying it back. I would just make this board aware that former boards made a deliberate board decision with board approval to eliminate that practice with other schools. That included Viera High School with the cost that they assumed for constructing their concession stand and their bathrooms. So I believe that, that those debts, if you will, were forgiven three or four years ago. And I was given direction as a COO at the time to develop practices that were very specific about when and how that could occur again. And it is, it was limited by board direction, if I recall correctly, to the resurfacing of a football field with astroturf because we couldn't assume the liability of a football field surface being neglected and putting our students in, obviously, in, in harm's way. So I, I would ask if that is something that the board is, this board is willing and interested in reconsidering as a practice for the district that I, that I very specifically have direction from the board that would be voted on because previously it was voted on to forgive debt for that specific purpose. And that we, I have time with staff to, again, develop guidelines and specific expectations of how that would happen. So, you know, just for, I inherited, if you will, that practice that had been done over many years and was faced to correct it, if you will. And I would just ask, you know, that the board give that direction. So I didn't want too much more to go down that, that conversation, not to bring back that, the expectation that staff had been held to in the past.
Mr. Gibbs, can I ask you a quick question? Can you push back on their, the county attorney and get that taken out? Or put in something related to, due to weather? I mean, these are things beyond our control. I, I mean, is there anything that you can push back on that? And I don't know if the county attorney would accept it or not, but I just want to know if you can push back on that.
I can certainly redline in a clause saying if we're unable to complete the project due to weather or force majeure circumstances, that we don't have to repay the 50,000. I cannot say the county will accept that proposition.
I swear to God.
Is it, is it your intention that in the, is it your intention that in the event that the 50,000 is eliminated, one way or the other, that this would be more favorable for you to do? Because I think that Ms. Campbell was also held up on the fact that the, the resurfacing and milling was not, she did not feel like it was appropriate to circumnavigate these other pieces.
Well, you know, I, I agree with Ms. Campbell. Because quite frankly, like you said, you've got Rockledge, I've got Cocoa Beach.
You've got Rockledge too.
Well, yeah, Rockledge is really yours, but yes, I mean, yes, it's in my neighborhood. So, but yeah, absolutely. But at the same time, do they not like Satellite? I mean.
No, no, I think Butler's great, it's there, it's an opportunity to take advantage.
It just seems like that would be the easiest solution at this point. But I'm not, I'm not that convinced.
I just didn't want to give direction, Gibbs, if in the event that you still, no matter if the 50,000 is taken out, would not even approve in the event of the milling and everything else that would be. That's the, that's the cross.
I'm just, I'm on the fence, I'll say.
So, Ms. Campbell, you do not wish from Ms. Hand to bring us back a contract for the track to be resurfaced next Tuesday? Ms. Staskovic, you do or do not wish from Ms. Hand to bring us back a contract for the track to be resurfaced next Tuesday? Ms. McDougal?
I'm on the fence. So, sorry, I know we interrupted us up, but I'm going back to Ms. Campbell's comments. Viera's not even on here. Like, it would be number 52. So why are we resurfacing the underneath if it's not even on our list of needing to be resurfaced? Because that's $200,000.
That's why Ms. Ms. Hand explained that it wouldn't, to spend $200,000 to rubberize the current asphalt surface.
So it hasn't failed, it's just like, we, if we're going to, we need to now.
Correct.
Okay.
It, it would be cost inefficient, I think.
And I, just to speak to what Mr. Susan was asking earlier, I, I'm not interested with Dr. Mullins in us backtracking on the school board's policy or standard to not do loans except for, for astroturf surfacing. That's a lot of upending things in this one decision when we have another solution available.
If Viera can raise the 50,000, then.
We could. I just don't, I don't, but see, the problem is.
Then we don't need to rush it now because Viera can raise that and you can do it next month or the month after.
Absolutely, so I said that, right? I said, let's just raise the money, but then they are literally going to wait three years because they are behind the four other tracks. So you have, you have people that have been raising funds since 2012 that are now going to sit there and wait until their number comes up on the list of tracks. So the, as, and, and, and just so you guys know, there's a cracked, you know, sprinkler that they're going to remill anyway. And, and, I mean, it's just, it's, it's okay. I understand. Everybody here has a great valid argument, but they will be sitting on 200 and something thousand dollars. And I, I guarantee you that Viera could make up that delta of the 50, but we don't have time. And that's, that's, and that's not fair to you guys, and I understand that.
So then I'm just going to throw this out there. I support holding it at Satellite right now, just, and not because it's my school, but, but because it just seems like the easiest option. But I would definitely entertain the opportunity, Mr. Susan, of moving Viera up on the list if they have the funds already ready. And I feel like maybe we've done that in the past when communities have come together and raised $200,000, that the district can reorganize a few things to, to help me and be a good community partner to Viera.
Really and truly, here's, here's what it came to. And Ms. Campbell, thank you for all of your, your, I agree with you. We don't need to be redoing policy, we don't, I, I do. I believe in what you're saying 100%. I just, what it came to me was that Rockledge could be able to fundraise quicker. And that, that to me, because it's like trying to pull blood out of a stone down there for fundraising. So you make great points and thank you for doing that. I, I really appreciate it. I don't want to extend this board. Ms. Alfred, thank you for taking the time to do this and, and to push it through. You guys have been very, very cognizant of trying to make an argument. I just think that in general, even Cocoa Beach, I plan on going over there and helping them. This is a big deal for me. This is a big deal for me, and I just think that in general, we need to be looking at these tracks in the future. So I'll do that, I'll withdraw it, since we don't have support for it. But can I just say, can we give direction on, we have the intent that we would like to work with AAU, even though we can't make a move, so that they can kind of start thinking, because they have all of these other organizations that are out there that are trying to come, and we make up a small portion of what it is? If we can just kind of, I know we're not allowed to vote, but if we can just before Monday make the opportunity that they know that part of the planning commission and everything else and the waiving of fees, that's what I really came today with. Like, the Viera track I wanted to do separate.
So, if I may, ran us in and move us forward on this. It sounds to me like, from what I'm hearing from my fellow board members, and if I misrepresent your intent, please let me know. It does not sound like we have support for a contract to be brought forward on redoing the Viera track on Tuesday, trying to meet the deadline of the six weeks, and which... So that, I think, addresses the MOU as well, because to, that's the $50,000. Now, I think, Mr. Gibbs, that I heard, and once again, you all correct me if I'm wrong, if the AAU is looking to do additional things with us down the road, and the TDC is willing to, you know, invest those dollars and move that timeline to something more reasonable, then maybe that's a conversation that can be brought forward. But I think at this point, what I'm hearing from you all, unless those things happen, is the MOU is taken care of, the Viera track is taken care of, and the funding for the track is taken care of as far as direction being given, correct?
One small thing in the MOU, he verbally said they would cover or help with custodial costs.
Separate issue, and that's going to come under the facility use agreement. Because this MOU is with the TDC. The coverage of the custodial cost is going to be directly with the AAU. So, Dr. Mullins, are you clear on direction on point one, two, and four that you brought forward initially at the beginning of this discussion?
I believe so, but let's just make sure. We, board direction is not to move forward with bringing board approval on Tuesday for the contract, which then resolves the funding issue for the track as well as the MOU with the county. But we do need to have further discussion on facility use agreement and cost of fees.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, facility use agreement, do you have any estimate on the cost of waiving facility use for seven gyms and a track facility?
I attempted, in anticipation of the discussion, to try and get a sense of what that would look like. However, our facility use rates and charges, keep in mind, are pre-COVID. And I think I mentioned earlier that I had been discussing with staff the availability of facilities to outside organizations, and that our rate schedule may change based on enhanced requirements to do cleaning and deeper cleaning and those types of things in between events. They have been working on that, that is not completed. We had set a July 1 deadline for that, to be able to communicate to our outside groups that are currently using our facilities and have, which have been suspended. And that work is not completed. The, and it's difficult to bring to the board an estimate of those costs right now because we haven't received a defined scope of facility need. So, we're not, Ms. Moore met with, by phone, with Mr. Buchanan this morning, and they had a conversation, and this morning, Mr. Buchanan still isn't in a place that he can fully communicate what their needs are going to be. So it's difficult, are we talking, do they, he had defined it would be five days for, likely five gyms for five days for basketball. It would be two gyms for five days for other indoor events. The problem or the challenge right now is, is it six hours a day? Is it eight hours a day? Could it be 10 or 12 hours a day? And that would significantly impact the rates. The other element that we'll be needing to manage for this is, in addition to custodial, is supervision. Because we will have a considerable number of people coming on and off of our campuses. At the same time, we have teachers returning to campuses for pre-planning week. So teachers return on August 3. This event is scheduled to, the dates that I received most recently are August 1 through the 8. So they would be co, you know, co-working. That doesn't mean it's a logistical impossibility, it just means we've got to plan and prepare for that, which would require additional supervision, and then, of course, the element of security. What would be the security needs during the events as well. So, I'm hesitant, I would, I would suggest the cost would be considerable for, but depending on the event. So if it's two gyms versus seven gyms, I mean, obviously, that's a considerable shift or a spread of cost. So the other element we're trying to work through right now is, at the same time that these events would be going on at these locations, our custodians are preparing and establishing our schools to reopen to our students on August 11. So, we've got, we talked quickly this morning, would we need to talk with AAU about contracted services or looking at a temp agency to bring in some additional custodians to help accommodate this? We're really prepared and willing to look outside the box of what can be done to accommodate and facilitate. Understanding that, our first priority and top priority has to be preparing our schools, our students and our staff for the return of school on August, well, pre-planning August 3, return of students on August 11. We can work through those things, but there are some, the cost would be, would not be minimal, I would suggest. And I guess that's based on the perspective of who would be looking at it, but...
So, is the board comfortable giving the BPS team the opportunity to continue to have those discussions with the AAU to see what their, you know, what our legitimate costs are and what the, what the AAU might be willing to cover on those costs and bringing that back to us on Tuesday?
For sure, I mean, the sheriff is putting forward $30,000, that's a great put toward security for... Right? Sure?
Can I, can I speak real quick?
Yes.
With the estimates that we have coming in, on our half penny of loan, we will revenue almost $90,000, okay, towards our facilities. Just in general, as an overall, this is coming across the district. For each one of our school districts' actual facilities, which I think should be spread between all athletic programs, no matter who the gym gets the gym and everything else, you're talking about tens of thousands of dollars. So when we're considering the whole, how much it's going to cost, again, so I would just ask the board members to consider the overall goodwill and what we will be receiving from these games in cash. Because I think that when you look at it overall, we have a delta in the athletics that we're going to be going towards. And some of those facility use agreements are not, they're just because of the facility. The actual cost to the district is, the electricity is a third of what that is. So when you're looking at a $71 charge for the school, $21 goes for the gym, goes to electricity. So we're literally charging for just the use of the facility.
And the people...
Well, and the custodians, they said that they would cover. And so, and your teams that are going to be hosting it, AAU's been in here for decades with the same process. All the gyms have worked them, so they, a lot of these people that would be doing this have already gotten the tournaments now. I'm just saying, when we look at, and this is just when we look at the cost coming back, I think that one of the things we need to look at is the actual cost, not just what we're charging people, if that makes sense. And I would also say, Dr. Mullins, that before we bring forward a recommendation to increase the fees and stuff like that, that we just have that discussion, too, that's all.
Yeah, absolutely. The facility use fee process, it does require board approval. We were hoping to bring that to the board on June 30 for July 1. But, you know, to your point, Mr. Susan, absolutely, the fee rate, facility use agreement is part of board policy, and that's what we're working toward. And, yeah.
Just to back, piggyback off him a little bit, I think the general consensus is we want to be good community partners. We don't want to make this difficult. Sometimes here at the district, we get in a bureaucratic bubble, and I think he's just saying, if we can make it easier in anywhere, can we err on the side of making it a little easier instead of maybe putting feet in the mud sometimes and making it harder?
I mean, I'm okay with making the match for what the county puts in to make the games come. We just mirror what they do. What they did was, they said, we'll give the first $50,000 to cost. Anything after that, AAU picks up the cost. They just basically said, bring the games, and that's what part of that is, so thank you. I'm done, thank you.
Direction clear, Dr. Mullins?
Well, I, I, I just, I think we're at a place that the board needs to be considering that either we are or are not going to waive the fees, and we'll do what we need to to establish what the process would be. Certainly, it's going to need board approval, because by policy, to waive facility use agreement fees, it will require a board vote, which obviously couldn't happen today. It would come on Tuesday at the earliest. And we can move in that direction for the board's consideration. And I'll do my best to estimate costs for the board so that they understand what that would be. But I wish I could give you more information today, I'm just hesitant. It sounds like Mr. Buchanan, by the end of the week, may be able to give us, you know, more definitive of what the scope of the facility need is. And we'll continue working with him closely to work toward that so we can give the board the information you need to make that final decision.
And I think also it's pertinent to know that Cocoa Beach, along with all other city councils that have events, are in the process of waiving their fees, too. So Cocoa Beach is in the process of, they're going to be doing swimming there, along with surfing and skateboard, right? So they're waiving all the fees, because they know that the revenue that's going to come in will offset the cost. So I have no problem making my directive towards the school board that I feel very confident that making a good partner and procedure is to not only accept the games, but then also waive the fees. And then I would look forward to seeing how much that comes back on Tuesday for a vote. If that, the direction that you did, and thank you for asking for that, Dr. Mullins, because I think we didn't want to put you in a bad situation.
Yeah, and I would just add, just so that we're all clear, there are absolutely indirect fees for utilities and those types of things. But in this case, there will be direct fees that we will be obligated for people who will be working, for services that will be required and that type of thing. I don't know that we can reasonably absorb the services with our existing staff, given the other demands and responsibilities they have at that time of year when we're getting ready to open school. So I would propose, I would suggest, that there will be operating cost expense that would come if the board chooses to waive those fees for this event.
And I was just saying, so that in the event that it came to question, I am okay with giving direction that the cost of those fees would be waived if we brought them forward on Tuesday. Does that make sense to you? Okay. Does anybody else want to weigh in on that?
I don't, yeah, I, because some of the organizations that are waiving fees, that is the thing that they do, and the primary thing that they do, whereas our organization, the primary thing we do is not to host these events. And so, and we're pulling people off task to do that. So I would not support waiving all fees for certain, I mean, I want us to be fair. But I would just say, I would say, yes, Madam Chair, let's ask Dr. Mullins to work with his team to continue to work with AAU on what their needs are going to be and what facilities agreement we can come to event reason.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Any other board members wish to discuss that topic before we move on?
Is, does Dr. Mullins need direction from each one of the board members to come up with a conclusion? Or, because he just asked us to give direction over the waiving of the fees, did I read that correctly?
If you want direction from me, I need to see what the fees are. I mean, you're like, five days, seven days, 12 hours, so many people, like, I can't say waive fees if you then run the numbers and it's $3 million. We don't have $3 million. Yeah, I can't make that decision at all until I see the fees.
And I would agree, I think we need to know what our additional costs are going to be, if we're going to have to hire people to come in and clean the schools, because we do have a commitment to make sure that we, our facilities are ready to receive our students. And so I think that all, that all plays a part of it. I'm not opposed to officially waiving the facility use fees if the AAU is covering a percentage of what we would have charged in facility use fee. You know what I mean? I think that's a, it's a technical way of doing it. Do we agree to waive facility use fees, but we also have an agreement that they're going to pay us whatever out of their operating grant, if you will? So, I think we're...
Yeah, I'm comfortable with the indirect fees, Mr. Susan, I know where you're going with this. Like, I think that we can probably absorb the utility bills for a week somehow. But if we have to bring on more people, I can't just say waive it when we have no idea what that costs for them.
You good?
Yep.
Yes, Ms. Hand, thank you so much for your time. Yes, we are going to recess for approximately three minutes, and then we will resume.
And we are about to leave session. Getting us back on the original agenda, our first... Can't hear you better? Thank you. Getting us back on our original agenda, our first item was a progress check, just to check in to make sure everyone's doing okay, no issues that we need to address, no support you need, no requests you need to make, any of those types of things. Okay. Then I will move us on to the establishment of our annual objectives. We did have a few submissions. If you recall, at the end of our evaluation, we established five, typically, we establish five annual objectives, things for us to include in the coming year to keep our focus. Obviously, our strategic plan provides overall objectives for the district, but these are just specific objectives for the board members. And so I will share with you a couple of the items that came forward, and some of them are kind of roll forwards from the last, the last one that we put together. One is making sure that we are visiting each of our schools at least one time per year. Everyone good with that one? Feel like it's still a valuable one to include. Sharing our champion information, so each of us are still assigned to champion particular departments or areas in the district. And so we, I think initially, we had that for us to share out during board reports at board meetings, like once a month. I don't know if you want to keep that monthly, make it quarterly. I know our, our staff teams have been pretty tied up, so I don't know if we want to take time to meet with them once per month so that we can do a report out, or if we want to maybe request less frequent while they're adjusting to the new, new norms and new challenges. So do we want to keep that monthly or do we want to go quarterly?
Sometimes those kind of leak out as, in our recognition times or just, you know, I'm okay with quarterly. I just think sometimes we don't necessarily need to do it every month when, like I said, sometimes those hit other ways.
Maybe the goal could be to meet, at least for me, I need that goal to meet once a month with my, I don't, I don't know that reporting it out is necessary, is a necessary goal. I think we should report out as those meetings, you know, as there's something important for us to report out, obviously, from those meetings, but I'm more interested in that, that goal to make sure that I'm meeting with my champion once a month. That's just my two cents.
Do we have consensus on that?
And I think the overall goal is just to make sure that we're meeting with the community partners in general. You know what I mean? And I think that we all do that on a regular basis.
Well, we haven't gotten to community partners yet. We're on the...
You're talking about our, like...
This is your board champion.
Yeah, your board championship area.
Annual objectives number.
That's last year's.
Yeah, that's last year's. We were all supposed to have submitted new ones for the coming year, so that's what we're trying to establish. So, but I think that's a good point, Mr. Susan, as far as community meetings, but on, are we all good with establishing an objective to meet monthly with our, with the department that we champion?
Which, yeah, and that can move around, right? I mean, like, if you have leading and learning, you've got, well, obviously, multiple people to meet with, and that's a good idea to touch base with someone.
Everyone good with that? Pam, can you word this my thought? Thank you. So we have visiting our schools at least annually. We have meeting monthly with the department that we champion.
And can you, you just want to just add, reporting out as needed?
And reporting out as necessary to the, to the public. And then another one that was recommended was our state of the district presentations, which was one that we had talked about, and we had kind of started scheduling some of those. And then, of course, all of this happened. So I, I think that's still a valiant effort for us to put forward. I know it's a little challenging for us to do it right now, but my hope would be that as things start to open up, that maybe we can, can get back on track with those. Do you guys want to keep that as an objective?
Yes, especially now that we have Ms. Hensley to help us coordinate that. I know mine was supposed to be this week, so it got canceled.
Yeah, so, so we'll keep that, the state of learning presentations or state of the district presentations. And then, does, Mr. Susan, do you feel like that kind of incorporates that community outreach? That's kind of the, the purpose of those is to get out into our community and, and share what's going on in the district?
Yeah, and I think that that incorporates part of it. One of the things that I've done during this, this process, and it kind of like really worked well, is I grabbed the president of the Rotary, the head of the, you know what I mean, all of them. And I do, on every Friday, I'm meeting with PTOs and all that stuff. But one of the things we might want to think about is just having all those individuals and having a meeting inside of our district via Zoom with them once, once a month or once every quarter. I found it to be amazing because it's like tapped right in. So the physical needs of the community and what we can do to help, it works out. So yes, but I just wanted to offer up for a suggestion. It's really easy. I meet with all of them on a Zoom call every Friday for an hour. And it's been amazing and it gives them an opportunity to talk to.
And, Mr. Susan, so those are, they're community partners, but are you making specific, like Rotaries and things like that?
No, ma'am. No, just, just if you, in the event that you're meeting with your community, offer them up a board discussion time via Zoom or wherever, just to kind of collaborate. Because one of the things I noticed when we started doing this crisis was that everybody, every one of our agencies is working in silos right now. And so there needs to be some cross connectivity, and I don't think anybody but the school district can actually do that better. I think that we touch every single agency and all that stuff, so that was all. It was just an offer. It was just, it was just an offer on top of what you already have, Ms. Belford.
That's a great suggestion. It ties in with another conversation that we're going to have shortly, Mr. Susan, so thank you. Another one which we had talked about, I think, when we were together, but also suggested, was for each of us to invite and host state and our local officials to tour a school in our area. Yeah, and we had started to work on that and then, you know, everything happened. So do we want to continue a commitment around that this year?
Yes.
Okay. We, you guys good with that?
And I, just so you know, you can have your employee or your teams reach out to them too. So those pre-K teachers are in the process of meeting with Debbie Mayfield, Randy Fine, all of them, and talking about the legislation that we may be bringing, but something that they felt. So there's an opportunity that in the event we can't bring them to the school, to actually have our people just reach out to them and have a conversation over the phone. It's also very good for them because they can connect to the principals. So just another observation and opportunity.
And I think a good point of that is not just our legislative members, but our, our, you know, our city officials and things like that, because some of them are very active in our schools, but some of them, really without an invitation, you know, and a tour guide, you know, to kind of help connect them, I think that's really important for those of it who aren't connected because they don't already have kids in our schools or they'd already have that partnership with their specific schools in their city. So I think that's really important just to kind of tag. You know, we even put a, you have to have a certain number or whatever, but I think it would be good each, at least annually, to host either one large one or several small ones, you know, within our, within our district.
So we'll say at least annually on that?
Yeah.
Just be careful of large groups because nothing ever gets done. It just doesn't. So like, if you bring them intimately into a school and discuss topics, but yeah, like a large one, everybody just pontificates and nothing gets done.
Yeah.
That's all.
So several small ones. But at least if we can set a goal of at least, each of us will do at least one, can we do that? And some of us will do a lot.
I think that, I think that's...
And you get more points, Mr. Susan? We're going to make it a competition? Who hosts?
No, I don't.
I'm just kidding.
So that gives us five objectives. Do you all want to stick at five? Do you want to expand?
I missed one.
Oh, I'm sorry, that gives us four.
I'd like to propose one.
Sure.
A goal of maybe quarterly or annually, a board slash leadership development opportunity for us. We've done a couple of those things at an offsite, but maybe if we put it as a goal, we'll make sure it gets done.
Quarterly?
Twice semi-annual, twice...
Semi-annually?
Like a professional development, like we had when we had the leadership.
Yeah, yeah, just something to...
That makes sense.
Can I...
I'm sorry, I missed that.
This touches something that I was going to discuss, is that we have, we have no, we have no collective want to try to go to master board, right? But I think that this board could really use some kind of collective team understanding of what our role is and what we can do. So we've talked in the past about bringing somebody in to do kind of what the master board is, but not the organization that we normally go through. So I know that there might be some other ones to technically get that. I would entertain, and I didn't know if you guys wanted to, the opportunity for us to engage one of those organizations minus the one that we, we don't want to go to, that if, if we want to, I, I think that would really help us. I think that us getting together, understanding each other, but then also the roles and every, I think it would infinitely save us a lot of late night sleep. So if we, I, I wanted to bring that as an opportunity or, you know, an idea. So what do you guys think?
Who else provides anything for school board? Other people do?
We can get, I mean, I...
Wouldn't necessarily have to be a school board specific thing, but a leadership team. Maybe we can reach out to county or some of the other organizations and things.
The county runs different. Like, we are completely different in the way we think.
But you know, we, the, I can't remember her name, Ms. Duskovich, the gal that you brought in to do the leadership styles.
Oh, Drensvild, Ms. Drensvild.
You know, something like that, you know, those kinds of things, if we say varied, maybe something like what you're talking about, but maybe, you know, twice, once or twice a year that we commit to...
Ms. Belford, did you go through master board?
No, we haven't done master. I went through chair, chairmanship training, but we haven't done master board.
The board before all the five of us, it was hanging on our wall in the conference room for a while, they were master board certified.
I reached out to some, some board members from a long time ago, just asking processes, procedures, what are your thoughts, what did you guys run into? And I went through some of the things and they said, you know what, the one thing that really helped us was master board training. And I, and I, and I, I really liked the lady that came in and spoke to us and it was great, but like, we literally need somebody to talk to us from a school board perspective of what our roles and responsibilities are and what lanes we need to be in and how we can effectively do that, because I think that that would help us. So I would, I would, I mean, here's, here's what I would think. I think we reach out to the organization that normally does it. Tell them, look, we got issues. We don't, you know, there's, there's an issue there. Let's try to find how we can make that happen and maybe they can set something up the same way. That's all. I don't, I don't know, and I'm just thinking outside the box and I apologize.
For the record, I'm not 100% opposed. I just, what I have attended of theirs, I haven't found real useful. And so that's why I've been like, eh, I don't know that we want to spend the money and do it, but I'm open, I'm not like, oh, I, I'm not going to do it because it's them. If it's useful, it's helpful, the rest of you want to do it. I, I'm a team player.
Ms. Belford, do you know who usually does those trainings out of the FSBA team? You, like, which, which one of the, is it the executive, is it Andrea Messina?
Usually it's Tina.
Tina Pinkerson? Okay.
Maybe they have something they can send us, tell us how much it's going to be, what exactly it would cover and we can...
They have information on it. The, the challenge with the master board training and the reason that we haven't done it in the past is I, if I recall, it's about $25,000 for the master board training, requires the superintendent and the board to participate at each of several meetings throughout the year. And then you get your master board certification, but every time a board member changes, you have to go through the whole thing again to continue your master board certification.
Sounds like a money, money trap.
But I mean, yeah, Mr. Susan, do you mind reaching out to them and having conversations, seeing what the options are?
I'll be with them tomorrow.
Can we pay half price and just get the material?
And write?
Or we just, or you just call the guy that normally does it and say, hey, look, would you do this for us? We really need some help. And, and they would work with us. I don't, I, I think that in the current environment, we need, we could make that recommendation.
So as for our objective, and I think it would be inclusive of what you're recommending, Mr. Susan, semi-annual professional development opportunities for the board. Is that good for our objective?
Yeah.
Gives us five.
Collective professional development.
Do we want to, is there, is there anything that you all feel needs to be included beyond that?
Is there a way to set that objective at a previous, like, meaning, what do we need currently may change year to year, so that growth or that development, maybe there's a caveat that says, you know, we're, there's a direction, like, the board needs to give direction as to what they need help in, because every year it might be different, right? So that's just my thought process. So that we, when we go to spend the time to do it, the, yeah, the chair can reach out collectively and say, hey, what do we need? What do you guys feel? And then that growth or that development can be streamlined into what we're doing.
Yeah, and I think that's a, you know, the, these are annual objectives, so they're going to change every year. But I think as we go through and do our quarterly board check-ins, that's a great time to say, hey, I feel like we need some guidance in this area, can we look at this for our next PD? Does that work? So are we good with five objectives? Is there anything else that anyone wants to add beyond that? Okay. Did you get all of those, Ms. Duskovich? Awesome. So the next thing that we need to discuss is our FSBA membership, and I gave each of the board members a copy of the budget for the board. There was some question as to whether dollars were set aside for that membership or whether they had to be requested. We do have dollars that have been allocated. Previously, we have done FSBA membership for four of the board members, I believe. The annual cost on that is $23,524 for all five of us to be members. If only four of us join, the total amount will be $18,819.20. I do desire to continue my membership with FSBA, Mr. Susan, Ms. McDougall.
Yes, I do.
Ms. Campbell.
Yes.
Ms. Duskovich, would you like to join us?
No, thank you. I will continue to abstain and save us, what, $5,000 if I...
But can I, can I speak?
Can I, can I jump in for a minute? I wish you were, because on Friday, the calls that we have had, they have been very valuable and they've had in really speakers that really speak to what we're struggling with, what's going on, how are they dealing with it across, not only the state, but the last one was the Southern Educational School Board.
Regional.
Regional Board. And they had, it's, I shared it with you all because I think their website would be very helpful. So I think there is some value. I agree that sometimes the, the conferences don't really have things that I want to go to, but some of the other things that they do offer is valuable, just an FYI.
Thank you, Ms. McDougall.
Can I speak to the memberships in general? We had an allocated budget for two memberships, and then all of a sudden, we look at our budget and there was a discrepancy in that other membership. I thought we had given board direction that we would have each board member would have the opportunity to join two of these organizations, and we had an allocated amount. And then in the event that a Tina Duskovich or somebody didn't, wasn't a part of one, or Matt Susan wasn't a part of one, that the board allocation revenue could then be spent in a way that they felt inside their schools. I thought we had given that direction up at the Brevard Achievement Center conference room, and we did it in the morning there. So is there any discussion about that? Because it came up a couple of times via emails, and I would like to discuss it.
We discussed, how I remember it, is we discussed allocating, I think, 7,500, so enough for your FSBA or the FCSBM, and then we allocated the 7,500 so you could join both, any board member could be a member of both. I don't know that we said you could spend it within your school after that, but it's not being reflected even in our budget, so...
Is it? I think that there's an opportunity for professional development. I think that there's an opportunity to do a lot of different stuff there. And I just, collectively as a board, I think that it, it's our budget, so in the event that there's an opportunity to utilize funds instead of travel or whatever, it's, it's kind of been an opportunity that we can give that back to our schools if we don't use it. I mean, I, I would like that discussion. I, I actually, I would like to say that in the event that we don't do FSBA, that we don't join these organizations, the 7,500 can be used as seed money for projects or anything that we do.
It doesn't appear to me that we have $7,500 allocated. We have $25,000 allocated for dues and fees, and then each board member is allocated 2250 for travel.
I do remember that conversation, Mr. Susan, and I was, I came out of that, you know, trying to remember, that we were going to allocate for each board member the amount of money it would cost to join both organizations. So whether that happened or whatever, you know, at this point, one of the organizations is debunked, correct?
We dissolved.
Dissolved is dissolved, and so that opportunity's not there, so we have opportunity for savings. I would just say, if, you know, if one of our members doesn't choose to join and we have a savings of $5,000 or however much it is, ultimately, it is going back to the schools because it falls to the bottom line and it gets, you know, spent. I, I don't, I don't want to have some creative way to divert it some other direction. I mean, it's, it's going back to the kids and to our organization as a whole. But now we have, you know, we would... But now we have, you know, we would have had to lower it back down this year anyway, because we wouldn't have had the opportunity to join two organizations.
One of the issues that we had was we had a certain amount of capital dollars that were allocated to us so that we could allocate those to our schools a couple of years ago. And it gave us an opportunity to touch on areas that had not been funded prior and some of unique things that we are passionate about as board members. We ultimately understand that holistically, the entire budget, that's our, that's our duty. Like every single dollar that is spent is our responsibility to approve, right? Um, and I think collectively, we've run into these situations where there's some really cool things at the last minute that we could fund. Um, and that's why I would like to have the conversation that we utilize those funds the way that we would like. Whether that's FSBA membership, whether that's growth for the, for the school board member, or whether that's seed money that we want to choose. We've allocated it every year, um, and that's my feeling. That's all. I was able to do some nice stuff for my Title I schools when I had the revenue.
So you're suggesting that we have, because what's showing on our budget right now is the 25,000, which FSBA is going to cost us, uh, 18, 19, 19,000. So that's going to leave a total of 6,000.
But who made this budget? Because this isn't the budget we approved.
Right.
Like, that's my biggest problem. How did these numbers change from what we allocated for our own budget?
The budgets that I've gotten in the past are a little bit different when I asked for those Excel spreadsheets. I mean, we found $200,000 in our own budget falling to the bottom line every year under workers' comp. It was a bizarre thing, right? So there's, there's actual, there's another way to do that. And, and this spreadsheet's great, don't get me wrong, but the actual, like, I just feel that Tina now, because she doesn't join FSBA, should be able to use those dollars the way that she sees fit. Whether she wants to give it back to the district, that's great. You as an individual, but if you wanted to use that as seed money towards your other stuff, you could.
But it's not budgeted as Tina's money. It's budgeted as dues and fees from the board.
It's different than what we, we said before. When we sat down, we all said, we're going to allocate this amount of money for each board member. The way that they did that process-wise behind is not consistent with what we said. So we said, we're going to have this money for each board member prior. It's not set up as board member one, two, three, four. But they do have that breakdown inside there. They have your breakdown on, on capital, on cost, on everything. So on your travel, on every one of those. So that, that is a separate breakdown somewhere else. I'm just saying in the event, and I don't, Ms. Belford, like, this would mean that I as an individual would not have any revenue, but I wanted to be able to in the future, if we don't want to be a part of FSBA, or if we wanted to utilize that extra funding that we had, um, I'd like to.
We might need to address, so my calculations say that we should have 35,500 in that account.
For the two, for the two things?
We need to address if we want to keep that, now that there's only one organization everyone wants to join, or if that just rolls into dues and fees and you can use it for other dues and fees. Because I think everybody ran short, all of you that went to an FSBA conference, and then when we tried to go to Tallahassee with the students, you guys were like.
We didn't have any money.
Yeah, you were out of budget, so.
You had to borrow from me.
I don't think I wanted to.
I offered to send some of my funds over to you. Like, it, you know, it got, so I don't think, I don't think this is a good budget for us, is what I'm saying. We've got too much in this account, not enough in the travel. It's just, I think we need to address this. And maybe today's not the day.
Yeah, probably I'm not going to be able to resolve it today, but so would we like to put that down as a discussion for our next board check-in? And Ms. Eskerbar, could we get a breakdown on how those dollars are broken out inside the budget? Attempt to.
I also know that I take the ads out of that 25,000.
The ads for our meetings come out of the dues and fees?
Um, so that tends to be pretty pricey.
Right. Especially when we have to run.
How are we paying for all of that with $25,000?
But dues and fees, no, she's, is a different light item than the 25. The dues and fees is a.
Object 737 under function 71.
Yeah, and then we have our, these own individual dues and fees.
Maybe they're, maybe like.
Those are conferences, like when we go to a conference, if we go to FSBA, it's $300. Or if we go to a, like a two-day workshop, it's $150. That's what, that, that dues and fees goes towards.
I, I really just want to scratch this thing and make my own little spreadsheet on it, because this is, this is not, why call it dues and fees? And it's object 737. If it's something completely different, then.
I think, I think you're right, Madam Chair. Like, maybe this is for a longer, larger discussion. Um, maybe we have our CFO come in and explain the reasons behind this stuff, and then we go from there. But my overall intention is to allow flexibility for our own budgets, depending on what we do. Because I might be already in Tallahassee for something and not need to use the money to travel with the kids. I would like that flexibility. Or if I wanted to pay for something out of our board budget, as long as it's within our purview, then I would like to do that, and that's all. So if that's for a further discussion, I think you're right, though. Like, we're, I'm looking at a different budget on my screen. This is a different budget and they do make sense. We just don't know how.
So, um, would you please make note for me to follow up for our next board check-in to request finance? Join us for discussion on the board budget and how that all works out.
When is the next board check-in?
We had scheduled them quarterly, but we may need to look at scheduling one sooner, depending on how many takeaways we leave with today. So, um, so FSBA membership, everyone's good with the four board members who have opted to join FSBA? Authorizing Pam to move forward with those dues.
Can I make a recommendation that Tina gets to spend her own money, the way she wants?
I don't know.
Um, Tina can do what she wants.
It has to fall within, I, I don't necessarily agree unless we, unless we revamp what we're doing. But the way it stands now, no, because it's designated for professional development, for dues and fees, for her to say.
Tina can use her money to pay for the people that are going to come in and work with us on board.
There we go.
Master board.
Since that's one of the goals I brought forward, I.
That sounds like a wonderful.
Dues and fees. As long as it stays within the, you know, I don't want it to become, you know, hey, let me give your school $2,000 for a new copy or boom, like I'm a, you know.
Or give a program that has no money that they can't even fundraise out of a Title I school.
I understand, but I think we have to, uh, in being true to the budget, I think we need to stick with what it's been designated for.
So we're good on FSBA membership?
Yep.
Um, that moves us along to community mapping. And Dr. Mullins, did you purchase books for them? Have they received them?
I did, and they're in the, uh, in my office. Take with them today.
Awesome. So, um, the next, I handed out a, a page to you all that, um, no, you don't have to now. Um, I handed out a page to you all. It says community mapping at the top. And this is going to be one that we are going to revisit for a, a more in-depth discussion as well, but I'm going to give you a high-level overview. Um, Dr. Mullins has purchased some books for each of the board members called Communities Cannot Do It Alone. And it's a, Schools Cannot Do It Alone. Thank you. Um, and it's a book that, um, I had read a while ago, like a long while ago, and then for whatever reason, um, picked it up again and read through it again. And it just seemed to really ring true with some of the challenges that we're facing right now. And part of the concept of that book is really bringing our community together around education. Which I feel like we do, we have a very supportive community in Brevard with regards to education. But what I tend to see is that, um, you know, Tina is whacking on one side of the tree and Matt's whacking on another side of the tree. And the Children's Hunger Project is on this side of the tree, and the Community Food Bank is on this side of the tree. And we're all kind of, you know, whacking away at the tree on different issues, but we're not getting to where we need to go because we're not uniting in our efforts. And we could do so much more if we could unite in those efforts and really be on the same page. So part of getting to that point, um, is mapping out your community and identifying who are the people in our community that we need to be connected with? And what are they doing in our community? So rather than me going, I have this great idea that I need to do this, when someone else is already doing it, we already have those connections and, and that map to say, this is who's working on this issue. And hey, maybe if we partner them with this other organization, we can tackle this together. So rings true for, you know, feeding children. It rings true for, um, early childhood education. So many aspects of our community challenges, there are a lot of great people working on, but we're just not moving in the same direction. So, um, one of the things that I would like for us as board members to do, if you all are not opposed, is to take part in mapping our district. Um, and I don't mean like drawing a map, um, but what it, what it consists of is sitting down and identifying, uh, and you'll see on this spreadsheet foundations that are in your community, civic groups that are in your community, youth activities that are available in your community, churches that are, are in your community. Um, and identifying who those people are, like a, a point of contact and their contact information. And then what do they do? So maybe you have a nonprofit called, you know, Ties to Angels. Well, what do they do? What, what issues are they tackling? The goal is eventually to have all of Brevard County mapped out so we can identify these different groups. But I felt like it would be easier rather than us, and Nikki's working on this as well, but rather than us dumping that concept on, on the team here at BPS, we are out in our community a lot, um, and we have a lot of that information. So if we can all just collectively start kind of filling in some blanks. So my thought was first, um, these groups are just groups that I jotted down. Like just brain dump here some, some different types of groups that I can think of for us to identify in the community. Um, so what I would like to ask is for you all to just, at this point, just look through these groups and help me identify what we've missed. That, that needs to be included as to the different types of groups in the community that we should be considering. And then once we have gone through that exercise and we've added everything in, then I will go ahead and create or ask Pam or Tammy to create, um, a smart sheet where we can start plugging this information in once we're all on the same page with, with where it's going. Are you guys amenable to that task?
You know, Tina doesn't like smart sheet.
Huh?
No, I wasn't saying, I don't like smart sheet, but that's not what my comment was.
But it'll be good because it won't duplicate.
Or Google Docs or whatever. I don't care what we use.
But that way we're not duplicating if we're all using the same document.
Right, because, yeah, because we don't want to, and, and we can have it broken down by district, but, you know.
A lot of things cross over.
Yes. And so I think it just makes more sense for us to have a cohesive document that we can work on mutually. Are you guys good with that?
Sounds good. When you're talking about schools, are you talking about our schools or charter schools and supportive schools? Because I see schools down there, I just didn't know that.
Yeah, all of the above. So what are the private schools in your community? What are the, what are the schools that are serving special needs students?
Our university partners as well.
Mm-hmm.
College.
Yeah, so, um, if you guys could, um, task yourselves with reviewing this, if I give you two weeks, is that long enough for you to review and make suggestions on?
For categories?
Categories to be included.
And, and just to save some time here in duplicative efforts, um, like Dr. Mullins already has a list of all the churches that he meets with, right? Um, my thing is, is that like, I'm, I love this list. Like, this is me, right? So I'm going to go through it, but I don't want to lose or miss things. So is there any way that like, um, Dr. Mullins, you could provide all those contacts for your churches? You know what I mean? Because I've got 25 that I meet with on Fridays that call in. And so I can provide those, but I don't know if they're all mine in my area. Plus, we may want to engage the chambers for some of these things, because they have multiple master lists of contacts. Like, they have it by category. So we could literally start there and then whittle down to the next level. That would be my idea. If we can engage the chambers, get Dr. Mullins and our communications department to fill now, then we come behind and be, oh, my, uh, you know, my rotary's not in there or that kind of stuff. If I could make that suggestion, because that would do, that would save us a lot of time in our two weeks.
Yeah, I, well, and, and the, those two weeks, I'm not asking you to fill in these categories. I'm just asking you to identify during these next two weeks to identify categories that we have not included.
Oh.
And then we can move forward on the next stuff.
I thought you were asking for the list done in two weeks. I was like, oh my god, like I've got to drive around for a while.
No, yeah.
I, I mean, off the top of my head, I would just add to schools, our colleges and universities specifically.
Okay.
Ms. Belford, may I just ask, Pam, will you please, um, get with Tammy and ask her to forward our community ambassadors list as well as our business partners list from government community relations to all the board members? Just, it'll help spark some.
Yep.
Who we're already connected with.
Perfect.
Mr. Gibbs, when my EDC meets or organizations meet, I would love to bring one of my other school board members if we're in their district. And it's a non-voting type thing. Is that going to give you a heart attack if I reach out to Ms. Campbell and said, hey, we're meeting at this manufacturer that's inside your thing? And I think it would be a great community connection. As long as she's in there and we're not talking about issues, right?
Legally, you can do it. I don't recommend doing it, just from a perception.
Would you like to come and stand between us?
It's just being at the same event. When it, the perception's going to be, really, they didn't talk about school district things the entire time they were at that event together? I mean, what happens if the group brings up something that is likely to come before the board at some point? Are one of you leaving? I mean.
Yeah, I mean.
Or if I, if, if I come as an observer, that's in sunshine law.
We can do this, Gibbs.
Right. I mean, you can, you, the law does not prohibit you from attending the same functions. It prohibits you from having any kind of discussions with one another about things that are board business or likely to come before the board.
Yep, because I think that would help a lot of organizations. I would like to go to a board meeting for the Children's Hunger Project. I would love you guys to come one at a time to a board meeting and to EDC, all of these different components, I think, so we can learn basically our, you know. Okay.
Thank you. Uh, with your permission, I would like to flip-flop item eight and item nine, because I feel like item nine, I'm crossing my fingers, is going to be a less lengthy conversation than item eight. Um, so I would like to knock that, knock that out if we could, and then we can get on to item eight, which is our graduation discussion. Are you guys good with that?
Sure.
Okay. Dr. Mullins, um, Ms. Duskovich had asked that we add this item to, uh, the agenda for discussion, but I know that you have done some work around this, so if you wouldn't mind, um, filling us in on where you're at at this point and.
Sure. Well, just for, for, uh, background or, or summary, um, you know, I've, I've had an ongoing relationship with our NAACP leaders across the district, but particularly South Brevard or the south branch of NAACP, uh, primarily because I, I was an area superintendent down there for, for several years and, um, developed a relationship with President James Minus and, and other NAACP leaders there. Uh, President Minus reached out to, um, Ms. Duskovich, or I think Ms. Duskovich actually reached out to President Minus and just wanted to touch base and, and, uh, see how, um, stay connected with what's going on in the world around us and, and certainly in our community. And President Minus shared with us and, and then forwarded to the board several, uh, resolutions that were being developed and, um, shared at the recent Florida State Conference NAACP. Uh, President Minus highlighted five, particularly that of, of 15 resolutions that were developed. Uh, and just, uh, bring them to our attention and, and, uh, share them with us and say, let's, let's have ongoing conversation around them. And, and the five that he, uh, shared, or he highlighted specifically for education was resolution, resolution number two, titled Bias Training Courts in Schools. Uh, resolution number four, curing the epidemic of, uh, black youth suicides. Resolution number five, I, I don't, I think they're numbered for our management. Actually, they're not numbered from them. But this one was civics education instruction and K-12. Uh, the next was COVID-19 and education. And, uh, another, parent teacher associations donations deepen educational inequities. So I, I think we've had them maybe a week, little over a week, and had a chance to, to go through them. I've not had the opportunity to sit down with staff necessarily and go through them and share them with them, but, um, had some conversation with Ms. Duskovich. Um, one that I, I particularly wanted to, uh, highlight is bias training, uh, courts and schools. I, I know the board is aware and, and, uh, our community, or some community leaders are aware, we actually had scheduled overcoming racism training scheduled originally June, I think, 8th. And given our, as, and it was inclusive of our entire leadership team, which is all of our principals, uh, district leaders, cabinet, of course. The board was invited. We invited our NAACP leaders as well. And, uh, we were, uh, anxiously looking forward to that training and, and really coming together as a organization around, uh, this issue, even before we, uh, long before, uh, the current awareness that, uh, you know, we're all responding to. So that has been rescheduled, uh, in September, because it is best facilitated when we can come together in a large gathering. Uh, when we can come together as an organization. So it is already rescheduled for September. I don't remember the date off the top of my head. September 2? Um, and inclusive of all the, the individuals I have already mentioned, we have a, uh, included is an ongoing work, working relationship with a gentleman who is leading that training to work with our leaders, uh, throughout the district as follow-up as well. So, uh, just wanted to, to, uh, highlight that. Um, also, uh, Ben, Ben in discussion with Dr. Sullivan and looking at our curriculum, particularly in middle school, US history, and our social studies electives in high school. She is in the, uh, process of working with her social studies content specialist and teachers in the fall. in the fall to look at our eighth grade US history curriculum at African-American history specifically and modules that could be developed to enhance and complement the curriculum that we have in place. But in addition, I believe a year ago, maybe two years ago, we piloted or launched a African-American history elective course, a year-long course for high school, and it was in place in one high school this year. We're looking to expand that a little bit further this coming, this coming school year and continue to grow that. It does take time when we add electives. Keep in mind that typically your, our student population is pretty static in terms of student growth, so when we add electives, we have to think about what we take off as electives because we don't have enough students to go through all the electives, if you will. So we have an intentional plan and path to continue to grow that as an elective, but I wanted to share that particularly in response to the civics education instruction in K-12. I followed up with President Minus on Monday, I believe, and just let him know we were working through these things. I shared with him some of the same highlights with him, and he was very appreciative and understood. Let's continue to come together and talk through these and so on. So that's kind of where we're at at this point.
Dr. Mullins, can I say something in regards to your US history piece? So the gentleman that you brought to our engagement last year, the principal to Palm Beach Lakes High School, has the most phenomenal program there in regards to what it was, and Kenny Johnson and I were actually gonna get in the car, drive down there, meet with them. We had it all set up and then COVID happened, right? I would, I would engage that conversation when we're talking about adding it to the curriculum to be engagement into the high school portion, not the seventh or possibly eighth grade, because the 16-year-old high school engagement is ultimately infinitely more substantive towards some of the race issues that they're trying to address. I think eighth grade's great, we touch on it and stuff like that, but there's a, there's an actual curriculum that talks to, as opposed to just talking about the slave and the triangle trade and the slave trade, to actually talk about the kingdoms and the beautiful things that we're in Africa, right? And that piece can be added very quickly into our 10th grade American history, and that, I think, is part of a conversation. I used to do it in my class when I taught American history, and I think that that's something we could do. So please, as you're moving forward with that part of the discussion, add that piece into 10th grade because I think it's, I think I would find it more, I don't know, that seems to be a flashpoint in time for kids when that, the individuals that are there that need that education are not there. And I would also say that the elective is 100% right, but moving towards adding it as part of a, part of our education inside of our school district is needed because it can't, we can't always offer the elective to everybody, right? We can't always do that piece, so offering a supplement to it would help, that's all. And then in the PTAs, is he talking, I spoke, I looked at the PTA donation one, and it says inside there that he says low socioeconomic, is he talking about Title I schools? So when we're framing our argument over the PTAs, would that be to Title I schools or what was that piece there? Do you know what I mean?
Well, I wouldn't suggest we had in-depth conversation about it, so I wouldn't wanna try and interpret or, you know, speak on behalf of President Minus and NAACP, but those are some of the things that we'll talk through and continue to meet with them about as we move forward.
We as a board or you as a staff?
Yes. I think, I think this is the opportunity, absolutely a time that we must, you know, look for expanded conversation and opportunity to continue conversation going across, you know, former formalities. We need to ensure that we have the right voices at the table and diverse voices at the table and continue the conversation, and I'm very receptive and open to all of that, as we have been. But I think, quite frankly, for us, just to that point, we gotta look at our frame of how we have done, and if we're at a, and I believe we are, at a place that our frame hasn't brought the results we want of ensuring equity, access, opportunity to all of our students. And this is our time to say, to challenge our frame and say, how do we move past where we have had as structures and conversations in the past and move beyond them? Not that conversations aren't happening and the relationships aren't there, we've got, I believe, very positive relationships across our community, across many different groups, inclusive of our black leaders. So we build on that and we say, let's, let's build and let's look to construct what we want to be next.
Ms. Balfour?
Hold on just one second. Ms. Duskovich, you had actually requested that this item be included in discussion, I think. Did you wanna take, what were you looking to achieve? Are we, I don't wanna gloss over what an outcome that you were looking for.
I wanted to, you know, I gave them to Dr., he sent them to Dr. Mullins and I, I guess, a week ago, so I just wanted to open the discussion, get these in front of you all so we can start having these discussions like Dr. Mullins recommended. And then I'm hoping that we can get a document from Dr. Mullins and staff, because I feel like when I read through these, oh, we are, we're doing that, and I don't think the community knows how hard, you know, Dr. Sullivan's the one that comes to mind, she has driven this since I've been on the board, a lot of these ideas. And so I think we need to communicate that in our conversations to the community, what we are doing and what we plan to do, where we're not, and we look at these and we can say, oh, we're already doing that one great, but we could do this a little better, or we could do that a little better. So I wanted to have that discussion and maybe direct Dr. Mullins to have staff put something together tangible that we can see exactly what we're doing. And where do we wanna go? One of these in here does give me concern and pause, like I don't know that we could carry that out, but maybe as a discussion, we could figure out how maybe PTAs could adopt a Title I school if they choose to. I know in Deleanica, we adopted Palm Bay Elementary for a year or two and I was serving there, and it wasn't, it still wasn't equitable, but we did a book drive for them and we did some things, and maybe there's, you know, maybe this is phases, maybe there's process, maybe it's just educating some of the more wealthier PTOs and PTAs on what the needs are. A lot of them will step up and be willing to serve. So I think there's work that can be done here. I just, I thought it was important to, and timely to get it in front of all of us for our discussion.
For Ms. Campbell?
I would just say, I agree, Ms. Duskovich, it's good for us to look at all of these, and as I was looking through each one, I was like, okay, what, after I look, you get through the whereas's, right, the circumstances, situations that they're pointing to, but what is the ask for each one? And, you know, out of the five, really only two of the ask directly come to us, the bias training one and the one about, it was number six on our list, about COVID-19 education, about making next school year be a time to make up for lost time, and I know that's already part of our plan. But I mean, just to be aware of these other ones as well because they're, you know, they do affect us. You know, one of the asks was to the CDC, one of, you know, coupled to the legislature, one to the DOE, so, you know, I, but I totally agree that, you know, this document, these documents were formed as a statewide, here's as a state what we wanna see, there are some things that we're doing really well in Brevard that we need to continue to do better, but that we need to communicate to our, to our NAACP leadership and to our whole community, here's, here's what we're doing and make sure they are aware of what is already in place and we wanna join them. But I, I just wanna take a time, and I know, you know, this is our first time, and we may also address this next Tuesday, but this is our first time to gather since all of the, the national turmoil has, starting with the death of George Floyd and then, and then, you know, the riots and things like that. And I think it would be, you know, I just wanna say as, you know, we've, we've been asked, I've gotten a few emails, I'm sure you guys have as well, and a few places where we've been asked, you know, every leader elected or otherwise has been asked to make a statement, to weigh in, and I, you know, as a board member, I've thought, okay, as in this role as a leader, what is my responsibility? Because the things that are, that are, we're talking about aren't necessarily related to our, the conflict is not over what's happening in our schools, okay? But our schools are a huge part of solution and the education and the way we come together, the training the next generation. You know, I've had a conversation with someone that some of the things that are evil still in our, in our nation, some of that is gonna have to be diluted over time, over generations, and so we have the great responsibility and privilege of pouring into this generation and the next generations and setting things up to, so that the path towards restoration and reconciliation can continue. So I just think it's important for the people who are watching and just, you know, because I, I know how the people in this room feel, that we know racism is wrong and we're doing everything we can and we're so proud of our staff for the things that they're doing. I say everything we can. We can do more, can't we, Dr. Mullins? But that is our goal, and so I just think it's important for us, you know, in this time, and again, I hope that we'll say something also, again, our, our more watched meeting next week, but just to say, this is important to us and whatever falls within our power of influence as a school board and as superintendent, as our district leadership, and even down to our teachers and our other staff, and, you know, this is, we wanna be part of the solution. And so I'm thankful for our great relationship we have with Mr. Minus and with our other NAACP leaders and glad they feel comfortable sending this to us and that we can have those conversations, but, you know, I'm thankful for this team and for the work that you guys are already doing and that your, that your goal is to continue to work towards even having a greater impact on our, our students.
I'd like to say something.
Very well said, Ms. Campbell. Mr. Susan?
I just wanted to say, Dr. Mullins, in the years that I've been a part of this organization since 2005, I've never seen a superintendent more engaged into this realm, along with Deputy Superintendent Ms. Sullivan. You deserve huge credit for this. I've asked you and I know you're not a boaster, like I know you're not, like it drives me crazy. I'm like, some days I just wish you would run out front, hold a press conference and tell everybody what you're doing, because this area, you are a champion. And I have never, I'm telling you, I wrote my history thesis on civil rights when I was at Florida State, and I wrote it about Harry T. Moore. So I spent two months writing a paper that is about Harry T. Moore, not even though I was moving to Brevard. And I understood the, the civil rights for this county going back 150 years. And I'll tell you that it's very, very significant, and I'll tell you, as soon as I came here as a teacher, the first thing I did was get on the Harry T. Moore Board and start working on bringing kids up there and doing all that stuff, and I'll tell you, the lack of what you're doing was needed so bad then, and I wanna commend you for what you do. Like I want everybody to know, like big banner across the world that Dr. Mullins and Dr. Sullivan have been leading this in what you've done, right? So that's the first thing I wanted to say. I also wanted to say, I've been meeting with the PTOs, PTAs, and they've been cross-collaborating. Amazingly enough, our PTOs in Suntree, Viera have been literally donating clothes, food, money, everything into our, into our Title I schools down in the south. They've actually started to become friends and they're starting that cross-collaboration. I think one of the issues that you run into is that a lot of our Title I schools receive Title I funding, right? So that's a huge chunk of money that they're getting to offset some of the costs. So when the PTAs are raising up money, some of the things that that Title I covers is what the PTAs up north, and I think that's part of the discussion holistically, but I'm telling you, they are ready. Like you just talked about adopt a school, you don't even, like we just have a circle of the PTOs, PTAs, and one will say, hey, we need baking goods because we have a bunch of birthdays coming up, and then all of a sudden, the Suntree moms come down with literally that. They're talking about outdoor classrooms, whatever it is, it's just like, boom, they all do it. So getting them into a room and just letting them talk, I think is part of that discussion too. But I did just wanna say, Dr. Mullins, I know you don't like to boast, but man, this is you. Like this is yours, you lead this district and great job, that's all. You know, could you do a press conference or something, big, bold?
You look so uncomfortable, sir, and this is well deserved, that accolade.
I appreciate that. I would, those are very humbling comments. But my, I'm not gonna, this has been a very heavy time. If you know that this has been an area I have wanted to lead and champion for our community, I would defer to our black leaders, our black moms, dads, our kids, and say, do you feel that way? And I'm not prepared to say that they would say yes, because we can do more, we must do more. And yes, there have been requests for a statement or a message, and it is, I felt personally and even professionally, it was necessary to take the time to understand better, because I don't know that I understood all I could or should. And I met, I met with our principals all day yesterday and spent the first considerable amount of my time with each, each of the principal groups, sharing my personal journey over the last couple of weeks with the, the images of the atrocities of the death of George Floyd, with the realization of what happened with Ahmaud Avery, and needing to pause and just seek to understand better why and how we are here. And I, I don't have the answers yet. I believe that we are a community, that we can come together and we can work toward them. Not can, we must and we will. I shared with our principals yesterday, every one of us, every one of us, if I were to survey, said, we got into this career, this profession to make a difference. And now we're confronted with the reality, with the personal challenge, are we making a difference for our white children, for our black children, for our brown children, for our children with different political preference, with our children, our boys, our girls, our children who have gender identity differences? Because if we're talking about racism and discrimination, we've got to be thinking about every one of the kids that come to us in our schools. And that's a very personal challenge to me. And, and this is a time to really do some, some deep consideration, because at the end of the day, we are, discrimination is intolerable. Discrimination in any form, in any way, in every, in any possibility, and we have to make deliberate decisions and choices to be anti-racist and to be anti-discriminatory. And framing that message almost is easier in, in talking than it is in written word. So I, I just share that now because sometimes I feel like I'm better in spoken word than written word, but most of all, I hope it's expressive of my heart for our community, every corner, facet, representation of our community. Because if we can't come together, the end of the day, no one person, no one group can bring systemic change. We've got to do this together. And as educators, change has been, we have been the groundwork, the foundation of change in society, in our country and in our community. And this is an opportunity to make sure that we don't let this go by us and not answer to the moral imperative. So not can we change, not may we change, we will change. We will bring change, we will be hide, be behind the change, and we will lead the change. I don't know what that looks like yet, and you know what? I don't know that I should be having the strongest voice of what that is. We need to make sure we have the voice. We did Youth Truth Survey this year for the first time as a district. If there's anything I'm proud of, I'm proud of the fact that we launched hearing our children's voice. I challenged our principals yesterday. Have you pulled out your survey results and started looking at the voice of your black children, of your brown children, of all the diversity represented in your kids? And I had to admit, I hadn't as a superintendent for us collectively. I said, but I will be now. So a statement of we will before we take time to understand and dig and evaluate and know where are we, and then let's make sure we have the voices at the table of where are we gonna go, because we've gotta do it together. And I know we will. I've seen our community do that, and I, I'm humbled that I am in a place of great responsibility and great leadership at a time when we can, we can make an impact, we can fulfill our moral imperative, and we can be champions for every one of our kids. And maybe for the first time, we'll come closer to accomplishing our mission as an organization. And maybe, for the first time, we'll come closer to accomplishing our mission as an organization and as educators than we ever have before. When we can say, we have served, we are serving, and will continue to serve every student with excellence. Excellence in the classroom and what they learn, because we're not gonna, we're not gonna settle for high, anything but high expectations for our kids. Preparing them to academically excel, every one of our kids and their future, that is the promise of their future. But it has to be on a foundation and a, and a rock-solid demonstration of day-to-day actions and day-to-day words and day-to-day deeds of dignity and respect and looking out for each other and lifting each other up. And without that, our kids won't be served with excellence. That's what we have to take this time to make sure that we, we understand and we answer to and we act for. So, thank you. Yeah. Hey, Francisco, get that clip. I want that window from beginning to end. Cut me out. I want beginning to end. I want that. I know you hear me back there. You got it? And then email that all to us so we can share it out. And I will say this behind you, Dr. Mullins, we do need to lead. And I understand that there's that humble leadership that's behind you. Nobody knows these kids and spends time more with them than us. There's not a coordinating agency that spends more time and understands those kids than us. We, as a district, our schools, everybody else, need to lead this, this situation. And I look forward to seeing what you're powerful at. I mean, you just did that. That's better than any freaking press release that I've had in four years. I'll just tell you right now, that was amazing. Thank you. Sorry. I'm all pumped up now. Gonna go run a mile.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins, for your leadership through that. I know we've discussed the, the struggle of how to verbalize what we're working towards. So I appreciate you sharing that. Okay, are we, Ms. Duskovich, did you, Dr. Mullins, do you feel comfortable with the requests? I think it started with the request for a document kind of outlining what we are currently doing around equity and support? Are you comfortable with that request? Okay. Any additional requests on this particular topic? Obviously, one that we will be revisiting, I think, on a, on a fairly regular basis. So anything else for today on the topic of the resolutions? Okay. Then that brings us to graduation discussion. And I believe, Ms. Duskovich, you requested a discussion around graduation today as well.
Yes, I think it's been, it's pretty well-known that postponing graduations to July has, has been very frustrating to me. And I have a, a large group of parents and families that are frustrated, but time is moving on. And so I, I spent some time speaking and asking Mr. Gibbs to, to help figure out where the authority lies and who gets to, like, if we, all five of us decided that we didn't like this decision and we wanted to try to force through an earlier graduation, what, what would that look like? And legally, you know, is that in our authority realm? Is that? And so if I could, I didn't prepare you, Mr. Gibbs, I'm sorry, but you already know this stuff because you told me and you sent it to me. So if you could, kind of for the public's purview a little bit, too, and for the other board members that may not have read their email, just help us understand where we are and what the board's authority is to, to change a date on a graduation.
All right. First, the statutes and regulations do not mention who has what, this authority at all. So everything, there is not even an agey opinion that I found saying, you know, superintendent versus school boards has this authority. So when I was looking at it, I looked at it, and this would be the basis of my opinion. Operationally, how does it work? Everything that goes into it. And it would seem to me, based on the structure of the statutes, that it is more of an operational determination for the superintendent to make. And that's just my opinion. I'm sure it works, and there may be policies that other districts have adopted that say, we are going to approve these dates. I didn't get that deep into it at this point. However, I would say, even if statute said it was the board's decision, by past practice in this district, that power would have been delegated to the superintendent. Because when I was looking at it, this board has, and I was not able to find any evidence that the board has approved those dates in the past. I was told that the superintendent sets them and the board is advised of those dates. So, and that's consistent with how it's worked this year. So, and, you know, the superintendent sets, he advised the board, the pandemic came out, they moved from May to June. At the time they were moved from June to July, the pandemic was still up. We were not in phase two yet. Then the governor opened up phase two, and that opened up opportunities for larger gatherings. So I would have, my conclusion would be ultimately that the superintendent had no expectation that he would need board approval to move those dates, at least this year. If you guys want to look at perhaps a policy moving forward, that is something I can do additional research on. I know in reaching out to other districts, their superintendents are all making the decision, as far as I, anyone that responded to me, if, when their dates have moved, they have been at the superintendent's authority and obligation. So they are not taking it to the board. Some didn't even change their dates at all. I think there were some smaller districts in the Panhandle that went off in May, no problem. But those that have moved have moved with the superintendent leading.
So that's really it, Ms. Belford. I wanted to discuss it because of my displeasure, but it turns out I don't really have authority to do a darn thing about it. So just wanted that publicly to be, to be out there.
Mr. Gibbs, when you came to that conclusion, which statutory power did you look at in order to allow the superintendent to make those type of indications?
I looked at all of the duties and obligations and responsibilities in the statutes of the board and the superintendent, as well as the regulations on those. And the board sets the broad stroke parameters. There's no, like I said, there's no reference anywhere as to graduation, other than graduation requirements. Those are set by the state, the school board, and its policy has implemented those graduation requirements. And it is even called for in its policy, graduation ceremonies. And it's set, you know, the requirements for participating in those graduation ceremonies. That's as close as anywhere as the guidance gets. So I concluded that, you know, the broad strokes are, it's an operational decision the superintendent's gonna do. And that makes sense, you know, strategically. How much goes into planning graduation for this number of high schools, you know? Is this event open? Is it available? Is, you know, how many times are you having to flip schools? I gotta move this school to that date now. If that had to come to the board every time, is the, is the venue even open now before it gets on to the next board agenda for approval by the board? I mean, can you do it? Yes. I'm sure there are districts where the school board doesn't. But I, like I said, I didn't get that deep into it in the time I was looking at it. But just the overall structure and scheme of the statutes. And then I turned to, well, even if it was the school boards, is the school board utilizing it? And that's where I looked at historically. The board has not set those dates here in Brevard. So I would have said, you guys have delegated that authority to the superintendent based on past practice. And the superintendent, going into this COVID situation, had no expectation that he needed to clear those dates prior to, you know, making those decisions. He did it in May to June. There was no say, hey, wait a minute, we need a board agenda approval. There wasn't any agenda item saying we needed to set those dates in May before COVID. So, and there was no problems with that. So to expect that the superintendent would bring the decision to go from June to July, because that one's more controversial, I would say, would be disingenuous and not fair to the superintendent.
I guess my question is, is, and I'm sorry, Madam Chair, can I go back and forth a little bit here? So my question is, is that I understand past practices. Like, we've never questioned when a school wants to hold their graduation. Like, that's just been something that we do. I think that the policy sets that we are going to have graduations. The question that I have is, is that under the extenuating circumstances of having COVID and under the extending circumstances that we've sort of not followed the same policy because of the way that we're doing it and all of those things, do you find that that circumstance negates previous, you know what I mean, things that we've done to the point where this is fresh territory? Here, here's the philosophical argument that I ask. Does the board have the right to interject here? So the superintendent decides to make a, a school board meeting or to have a graduation and says, we're not gonna go ahead and graduate in June, we're gonna graduate in July. Should the school board have the opportunity to speak to that?
You can certainly speak to it, and you guys can all say, hey, we prefer to, if this were looked at for a June graduation. If you dig in and say, we're ordering you, and he says, I don't believe it's your authority, you're gonna end up in court, and this, and you're not gonna have graduation till August.
If, if I could clarify for our public.
Yeah.
The board members were notified that the recommendation was going to be made, that graduation would be postponed until July. So this is not a situation where the superintendent reached out to the board and said, I'm doing this, and I don't care what you have to say. We all had an opportunity for input. And if we had said to him, if the majority, right? Because we, because of sunshine, we can't speak to each other on the issue, right? But if the majority had said to him, I'm not comfortable with this. I think it's important that our public know that this board has such a relationship with our superintendent that he's, he's not going to overturn the board. I mean, you guys are almost making it sound like I'm, I'm digging my heels in and he didn't listen to me, and now I want... It just, it feels incredibly uncomfortable to me, and I feel like we're putting Dr. Mullins in kind of an icky situation here, because that's, that's not how it went down. We all received the notification. We all had opportunity for input, right? So, and I get that maybe something came up after the fact, maybe you're reflecting, you know, your constituents' feedback. I absolutely get that. I just don't want to give the perception that Dr. Mullins went against the wishes of the board.
But how do you know that? Because I gave my feedback, and I was very strong on it. But I, because of sunshine, I have no idea what the four of you said. I can wonder and guess, which is why I wanted to bring it up today. Because, you know, I've seen some things publicly that Mr. Susan maybe wasn't too thrilled. I have no idea what their private conversation was. Maybe he said, go ahead, and now he's like, I don't really... I have no, I have no idea, because we've never, none of us have ever discussed it. So, yeah, it's, it's an uncomfortable situation, and we seem to have to do this often. Not usually directed at poor Dr. Mullins, but because we can't have private conversations, our uncomfortable conversations have to be public. And so, you know, this is, it's, it's a new territory, like everything else right now. Because, because who's moved graduations a month and then another month? Nobody, ever, because we've never had to do it before.
Historically, it's not an issue.
What?
Historically, it's not been an issue, and it's never come up. But, you know, this year being what it is, this has arisen.
So, Madam Chair, you're 100% right. Dr. Mullins reached out to us. We just expressed our situations in between. I think the problem is, is that the collaborative effort of how those go to be. I think that, you know, as far as us discussing the situation, I, I, as a school board member, don't know that there might be objections, there might be other things that we need to go to. And, you know, those, those kind of things, I think now, hindsight, going back, may be something that we need to have part of our discussion. And I'll explain the athletics piece. I expressed that I would, I didn't want to move forward with the athletics piece that we were doing, right? I wanted to try to open up athletics as fast as possible. But there was no venue for me to kind of explain the why. There was no process in place to do that. And part of that is that we haven't been meeting but once a month, right? But the other process is, is that I see it happening right now. It's like, it's, it's catching me, because there are decisions that are being made operationally that affect our community and affect our citizens and our voters, that I think that we should have input on. And I think that during this time, since we're, you know, I'm not throwing haymakers or arguing. I'm just saying that right now, we are in a place where the decisions collectively should include the board moving forward in athletics, in graduations, in all of that, now that we have an opportunity to look at it. When I looked at statutes, Mr. Gibbs, I read the, the constitution, and it says, "School boards shall operate, control, and supervise all public schools in their respective districts, and may exercise any power as expressly prohibited by the state constitution or general law." Right? So those pieces give us that general, I felt, area of control over this area. And that, that's where, when I started looking at this, I was like, look, there's, I've never seen a situation where Dr. Mullins, and, and thank you to him, that if three board members said they disagree with anything, that he would ever not move forward and say, the hell with you guys. Like, I just, I will give 100%. I just think that we collaboratively should discuss the decisions, right? As we move forward for some of these big topic issues, including graduation and athletics and stuff like that. That's all. And I think that I, I would have loved to have heard your objections, or your objections, Ms. Campbell, or Ms. McDougall, your positives. Like, look, what do we have as a board? Because ultimately, the people that we represent are the ones that we're affecting, both with work, with athletics, with kids, with all that stuff. We are responsible to them. And they don't come to, they don't yell at the school district and people, they yell at us. So collectively, we should have a voice. That's my only opinion. And, and I would suggest that moving forward, we have that opinion and that collective voice. But I'm only one board member, and no matter what the statute says, as long as other board members are willing to, to do that, then I can't win. But that's what my piece was.
Well, and I would suggest that we, we did have the, the collective voice as far as giving directions to the superintendent. My, my point, my, I guess my issue of concern is, it almost sounds as though a claim is being made that the superintendent did not take input from the board, and I think that he did. And I, if any of us questioned that he fudged the majority stance on that, I mean, I don't think that's where you guys are going, but I feel almost like that's how it's being portrayed. Well, we don't know if three board members agreed with him or not. Like, that's, that's just a really...
The issue's more, if three board members disagreed, or if five disagreed, did he have the authority to go do that? That's where my issue was, and that was settled with our attorney. That's...
And my issue is, is, you know, the how and everything else in the past. I think that collectively, we should have a voice. And where I say that is, is this. Right now, there's actions and teams, and they're moving and everything like that. And they're, they're going forward with a lot of operations. Like, we're gonna hear about an athletics portion, that we may be doing some different things. But part of that original process is where I would like to engage and give board direction as to what our feelings are on certain things. Prior to getting a phone call and saying, hey, we're moving forward with this, do you have any concerns? I don't know what I might miss. I don't know if you had something you wanted to say. That's all. I, I think that, and I was gonna make a, a recommendation that we might want a notice meeting every week here until this thing, crisis, comes out, because we don't know what's coming. And I think that having those conversations and having Dr. Mullins, he's, he's very open about everything. He's not hiding anything. He's not sitting there saying, oh, who, who, who. But what he's doing is, is that he's, he's trying to run a district, and he's trying to do it as best as possible. And what we're saying is, hey, we're the collective voice, the, the people. Can we be a part of that voice moving forward in an open forum, not just on a phone call? That, that was my piece.
Well, and I think sometimes that comes down to a scheduling issue, which, you know, brings, brings your point forward. That I get.
Mm-hmm. But I, I would ask, Mr. Gibbs, her original question was, if three board members are against something, do we have the collective right to say no in that situation? So Dr., and Dr. Mullins did not do this, please, please do this, but for moving forward, she asked that pointed question. What is your thoughts on that?
As it stands, the board, as I said, there's no clear yes or no on that, just the overall structure. He's in charge of operations, and the district has never set those dates. So again, if you were to say, next year, who sets graduation dates? I would say, you guys have delegated that authority, absent your taking action, to the superintendent, even if it were clearly yours.
If it's not something we're voting on or have traditionally voted on as a school board, then it's his authority.
You've never, you've never set those, so I mean, that's where it is.
Where I, where I wrap my head around this piece is, the traditional part is out the window due to the fact that we're in COVID.
Right.
So like, that's, that's the piece that, like, we're, to say, to make arguments over based in proper processes and procedures, my argument is, we're in a different place right now. That was, that was the piece.
He would be my concern with that and any other operational decisions that he has to make during the next few months, is that do you, do we really, as a county, want five politicians, as much as I don't like, like being called that, making operational decisions over all these little things? Do we want the person whose task and who has a whole team of people who are experts in their field making these decisions? I feel like we wouldn't be, even be here except for people are so unhappy. And I, I understand why people are unhappy. But let's just talk about this board for just a minute. We were made aware, the day that the announcement was made, which was May the 29th, okay? We were made aware of that decision on that day. The governor made his announcement to move us into phase two, if that were to affect any of our decision-making, last Wednesday. If at any time, a member of this board wanted to call into question the decision that Dr. Mullins made or ask for a recall considering new information of us being in phase two, as soon as the governor made that announcement on June 3rd, any of us could have called a meeting. And we would have had time to advertise so that we could have a meeting before. so that we could have a meeting before and have this, have a voting time today. Nobody did that. And so here we are in a meeting where we can't really vote. We can have this discussion. I'll be completely honest, before we could do anything to vote, to overturn, to override, it would be next Tuesday. And at that point, we have, the June graduations were supposed to be Thursday, the 18th, and then starting with Brevard Virtual School, and then graduations on that Saturday. And honestly, at this point, even if we were to have made the decision today, I think it is very unfair of us to ask our team to have such a quick turnaround and to yank people's chains one more time. And I understand why people are upset. But at this point, when that announcement was made on May 29th, as unhappy as people were, they started planning of, here's our graduation dates. It's going to be July. And our teams are prepared for that. And we're doing all the other things that we've got to do right now. But then for us to hear on June 10th, say, okay, in eight days, or 10 days, or some of them have a little bit longer, let's turn the ship around and, and, and get this done. I just don't think it's fair. And I, like I said, I understand why people are upset. And they, and some of them have been so vocal in, in communicating that. And really lately, the, the kind of word that I've been getting, let's just be honest and get it on the table, is people, they're like, well, let's do the alternative graduations. Let's do, this county's doing this and this county's doing that. Well, you know, I feel like our superintendent has moved forward with the wishes of the students that he met with back in April, who even said, even if it gets pushed to July, we want an in-person graduation. And it wasn't just those students, because I don't want to put all the pressure on them. And that wouldn't be fair. But our, our, just our school leadership and all that was, was made collectively. And, and so, to have an in-person graduation. And people have done all kinds of creative things. And I will say this. Can, I, I don't know if you would agree with me, but I believe the class of 22 has been the most celebrated senior class of all time. And I know they've missed out on so much and that's why we poured so much into them. But across the nation, I think they've been celebrated because, because we all recognize what, how much they lost out on. But I just would not think that it would be fair at all to ask people to turn the ship around in such a short timeframe at this point, when really, as a board, we could have, either any of us could have called this at an earlier time.
If I may, I've got several issues here. One, I attempted to, I inquired about calling an emergency board meeting. And it turned out, we couldn't meet until tomorrow with notices and stuff. So it's, at this point, it doesn't make any sense.
Can you ask him to explain that process? Of how that worked? How that request after you're done?
Well, it wasn't a direct request. I didn't get that far. I said, how would this work? And he said, I would, he and I had some mixed communications, which is why there was issues between all of us. But I said to him, can you send out an email? Or he said, I would send out an email, something of that nature, asking if you all wanted to have an emergency board meeting. And it turns out, he made phone calls instead. Or special, yeah, he made it very clear, it's not an emergency, because it's not a disaster, it's a special board meeting. And anyway, I, I also, at the same conversation, asked about the authority. Like, because I wasn't sure if we should have a board meeting. If we didn't have the authority to do anything, why call everybody in and scramble if there's, if we have no authority to do anything? And he, Mr. Gibbs, kind of ran with it and called you all. And apparently, three of us said we wanted to do it. But at that moment, I was like, oh, wait, no. Because at the same time, he told me, we really don't have the authority. So that's why there was no special board meeting. And now we are, I mean, it is getting too close, which is why I just wanted to take the time today for Mr. Gibbs to say that. The thing I take issue with, Ms. Campbell, is you saying politicians making decisions. These are big decisions for our community. And this is our responsibility. We may be politicians, but we've been elected by the people. We're the voice of the people. And I take that so seriously and so intently. This is, these are public schools that are supposed to be represented by the public. And we are the only five voices representing the public. These are all, well, he's our employee, and those are all his employees. They're not technically responsible to the public, of the public schools. So to me, this is a huge philosophical debate. And this is kind of what I wanted to get in today, to understand from the five of us, how we look at our positions. And I think that's even what Mr. Susan was pointing at in our training from FSBA or somebody. How we view our positions? Are we supposed to just uphold what our employee recommends? Because they are the experts? Or are we supposed to be the voice of the public in the public schools? And I think we may disagree on how I view that.
Well, your point is very well taken.
So, Mr. Gibbs, are you saying that she requested an emergency meeting? And that the reason that she didn't was because she was told that no matter what, even if we had the emergency meeting, we did not have the authority to change the graduation date, even if we had a majority of school board members?
No, I had made plans to schedule the special session for tomorrow. And she said, no, based upon my information, you know, my opinion, that it was given to the superintendent, even if it was yours, as I explained earlier. When I walked her through that, she was like, there's no need for this special work session.
Two reasons I decided not to. One, his opinion. He didn't say, there's nothing you can do. It was not that kind of conversation. He, he said, this is my opinion. This is how you've done it traditionally and that's precedence. And I accepted that. And two, somebody mentioned that the date would have to be so far out that at this point, we were going to meet today and now we're so close.
You have to have 48 hours notice. All right, the earliest we could get into Florida Today was Tuesday. So 48 hours was Thursday. You were already coming here today. So she was, you know, at that point, happy to discuss it here, since my opinion was that the authority had been given at a very minimum to the superintendent.
So I received a phone call, I think on Thursday, was it? Was it Thursday that started this?
No, it was Friday.
Was it Friday or Thursday?
Friday.
And then at that point, it's a, we would put it inside the newspaper, right?
You have to advertise it, yes.
And then they need 48 hours? They need 48 hours?
No, they, they couldn't get it in the paper until Tuesday.
Four days to put an advertisement in the Florida Today?
Yeah, that's...
Because they don't work the weekend. So there's talking that Friday and Monday for the ad to run on Tuesday.
But the Florida Today said that they could not get an ad in the paper until Tuesday because of the way that their infrastructure works?
They need two days leeway. And there's not Saturday or Sunday.
So the earliest according, because of the restrictions and the, and the thing would have been Thursday, that we could have done it?
That's the earliest we could have gotten it.
And then, but then it hinges back on your opinion that even if three board members said, we want to have graduations in June, we couldn't do that. Not barring us being politicians.
You guys can do whatever you want to do. At the end of the day, you guys could have held the meeting and said, hey, all five of us want to change back. And I mean, you can sit here today and ask Dr. Mullins to look at June dates and change it back.
And understand, I'm not making this argument right now over the graduation. I'm making this argument because we have some serious issues coming forward before us. And this sets precedent that the school district cannot make a decision on operations during a COVID crisis to make, even if we're in the majority. That's where, that's where I'm going with this. Whether it's athletics, whether it's graduations, whether it's all of that stuff, even school opening days. I mean, like, do you, does that make sense?
If it's a statutory, well, it's going to depend. If it's a statutorily given right to the superintendent or it's a school board area. I mean, you certainly have the authority to give directives on areas in your area. If it's operational, then it's statutorily been given to the superintendent. Even the constitution says you have the authority unless it's mandated or given to the superintendent. So that's the way it's set up. The question here is, who has it? It's, there's no clear answer. All right, you read it and you, there's no guidance anywhere. It doesn't say the superintendent has authority over graduation dates. It doesn't say the school board has authority over graduation dates. You're going to have to read it and infer. And that's what I did. And that's why I said, even if it was given to the school board, the school board has never executed its authority to schedule those dates. So it delegated, if you had it, you would have delegated it at some point in history. Whenever graduation ceremonies came up, I don't know how far back it goes. It was given to whoever was superintendent to schedule. And that's how it's operated. So...
I've just never seen...
Now, in an emergency, if you guys want to do that, that's, there's certainly, you could call for certain things. We don't have standing meetings, like, every day, or, you know, the county did every day. They were having meetings to discuss issues as they came up. If you wanted to implement those, you can, you're free to do that. It doesn't give you any additional authority over what area you have. So if it's an operational decision, it would be an operational decision, which falls on the superintendent.
Okay, so what I guess I'm getting at is, is we are in a time period where we need to have this discussion. And thank you, Ms. Belford, for bringing it up. If three board members say that we want to have graduations in June, you're telling me that that doesn't matter? Is that, I'm trying to get to that essence, because we may have these, these, and I, and I, and I understand that you're trying to go around. But maybe what we need to do is, is as a board, say that during this COVID crisis, these issues are what we are going to ask for collaboration and input on. But we need to figure this out. Like, I don't want to just kind of let this thing go and then just, eh, whatever, because this is huge right now.
If you can ask for collaboration on anything you want. I'm saying that there's nothing, there's nothing here saying one way or the other. All right, in my opinion, the way it's set up, it is, it's an operational. But even if it were yours, the board has delegated it. If you want it back, you would need to undertake rulemaking to say, we're going to approve graduation dates. There would need to be some form of notice that says, we're taking it back. Because you've never exercised that duty. All right, you don't walk in one day and say, hey, we're changing graduation dates.
Which what I'm hearing, Mr. Susan, is that it's a bigger issue than the graduation date. So...
Right.
To, to rulemake over setting graduation dates going forward, I don't think is resolving the concern that you're bringing forward.
No, but I, I think that, I'm sorry.
So, I mean...
I think that this is, this is athletics. This is, this is school openings. This is procedures. This is, this is all of that stuff that affects our people. So when these people say, you know...
Procedure, I want to click, procedure is rulemaking. So if you have rules on it, those would govern. There are no rules on graduation dates, like I said.
So if there's no, in the absence of rules, then the school board has the authority to make the decision?
If it's a, if it's a policy decision, you would absolutely have. But you would have to undertake rulemaking.
Isn't, isn't policy decision, isn't it the policy that we are going under for graduations that we are changing? So ultimately, if it's a policy that we are following to make the change, the date change that falls under the school board because we are the policy holders?
There's no reference to graduation dates in policy. It just says that they will be held.
Okay, so if it's not in the operation of the, if it's not expressively said by the, by the policy, if it's not expressively said by the superintendent, that, that, that type of an operation and duty falls onto the school board to make the operate?
Operations fall on the superintendent.
Operations are superintendent, so...
Operations, day-to-day, day-to-day operations.
The board has, the board has directed graduation ceremonies. It has not provided any other parameters. The superintendent has the obligation as the CEO to implement that policy for graduation ceremonies. He has done that. He has, he schedules them year after year. He goes about, makes sure they come off. This year, we got a wrench thrown in with COVID-19. And CDC guidelines on distancing and everything. And he considered, you know, met with students and leadership. And everybody wanted the in-person, as Ms. Campbell just said. So he moved them to the summer. When he decided, when he made the decision to move it again, those parameters were still in place. There's no guidance. The school board has not taken any guidance. If you, the board wants to say, hey, let's revisit graduation policy and say, we want this and we want to set these dates and approve these dates, I will look at that for you. But in, right now, I don't know that that's addressing your thing. If you're talking about something else, facility use, where it's a school board right, then you can certainly weigh in on that. So I mean, the answer to your question's more complicated than graduation. You, I don't know that we can build the discussion of your issue around graduation, because it's going to depend on whose right it is. That's where I'm trying to get to.
And I don't think that this system was set up with the clause that I read in order to allow decisions to be made during a crisis without board input. And, and which is not what happened. I'm sorry. Okay, I'm, please don't understand, I'm not saying that. But without, without three board members approving. Like, I, I just, I literally have a severe problem, just like you were saying. And then I, I understand that we keep saying that we ask the kids. But we asked the kids in April, was what I heard, right? I mean, did we ask them in April? And meaning that May, this decision was made. So if we're asking them in April, I, I don't understand, we keep saying, we pulled the students. We pulled the students. And, I mean, I would have thought that we would have pulled the community with the students, the PTOs, the, the, the other groups that are inside there and said, graduating class, what do you, what would you guys like? Like, I understand we keep using that as some kind of a shield that we went to the public. But was that done, I'm sorry, and maybe there's a clarification, it was done in April?
I didn't, it wasn't...
I will clarify, because I was, I was part of that discussion with our student government leaders. And I agree, it, it does not necessarily fall back on them, Mr. Susan. Because we spoke with the students, Dr. Mullins and I, and Dr. Sullivan, and there were several other staff members that were on the call. The one thing that the students made very, very clear was that they wanted a traditional in-person graduation. And they were fine with a date in June and a date in July at that point in the conversation. The thing that I will say is that, you know, Dr. Mullins made the decision to push graduation based on the recommendations from the CDC and our ability to both provide a traditional graduation as well as to be able to provide it safely. And, and I'll throw out there if you, because I think it's important. How many of you have read the actual step-by-step plan for reopening Florida? Any of you? Okay, so here's a big, 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 big concern that I have. And I'll tell you, you guys know, right? Like, I, I try really hard to take into account the perspective of all. Under phase two, although everyone thinks that the world has been completely reopened and we don't have to do anything anymore, there's still a very clear recommendation that senior citizens, anyone with a pre-existing condition, stay at home still in phase two. And so what my mind goes to is, how many students do we have graduating whose mother or father is battling cancer? And can't go to their graduation? Or is that student going to be comfortable going to that graduation and then going home to someone who's going through treatment for cancer and is immunocompromised? How many of our medically fragile students do we have that are graduating this year that couldn't go to their own graduation right now? Because they're technically, they're still supposed to stay home? How many grandpa, we have, what, 5,000 grandparents raising grandchildren in Brevard County? How many of those students are graduating that have been raised by their grandparent and their grandparent would not be able to go to their graduation right now under the CDC recommendations? I just, in phase three, it opens up. And, and those people who are currently recommended to stay home then are encouraged to still utilize social distancing, minimize, you know, exposure to large crowds. But right now, under phase two, they're still supposed to stay home. And 75% of our students, 50% of our students who are graduating may be completely comfortable and have no concerns about going to graduation. But graduation shouldn't be for 50% of the students. It should be safe for everyone to attend and for their families to attend. And that's what our students wanted. They didn't want to stay six feet away from their peers. They wanted to hug them and squeeze them and jump up and down with each other and celebrate. And it's just frustrating to me. And I get that people want to move forward. But I don't think we're thinking about every student that we're supposed to be serving think we're thinking about every student that we're supposed to be serving and every family that we're supposed to be supporting in trying to push this forward. I just can't.
I didn't think we were going to have the graduation argument. That's why I just kind of asked Mr. Gibbs so we could not get into pointing fingers. But with that argument, Ms. Belford, I have plenty of parents that their students are heading off to the military. July 1 seems to be the big day. So there's no, there's no answer for including everyone in our graduations with what has happened. And that's not anyone's fault in particular. That is, you know, what's happening in the times. And so I just, I want to stand up for the people that are also going to miss their graduation. I don't think they are
Yeah.
Saying anything negative against the people that are too sick to come out for the graduation, but, you know, they're going to now miss their graduation because they won't be here. So it's just a really unfortunate situation.
It is.
Can I, in Phase Two, it's my understanding that it's for 50 or less groups? Do we have any graduation class that's less, I don't even think Edgewood or West or?
There's, but if you've watched, and you've been home, Cheryl, so surely you've been watching a lot. There's, you know, you look around the country, they've done fifty, they've divided up three sessions, the smaller schools, they've done six feet on field, you know, they've done, there's a lot of creative.
Well, there is creative, and I'm just wondering for our, I'm just throwing this out there, that I know that in one district, what they did, the students did walk, but they livestreamed the whole event so every single parent could go ahead and see that, whether they could attend or not. Just, I'm just saying, because I want to throw this out there, guys, what's going to happen if we are the same place in July?
Well, and I think we're going to have to be prepared for Plan, you know, B or C if we get to that point. Absolutely. I don't, you know.
I reached out to my grandparents, reaching grandchildren representatives. I've got a couple of them, and I asked them, I said, personally, talk to me about this graduation. Would it make a difference? And they said, if we were to go, it would not make it based upon, you know, the Phase Two or the Phase Three. They were under the same impression when I was talking to them that, and this is just for discussion, again, I'm not trying to advocate for things, but I just, when we say that, what about those people, what about those people for cancer, what about those people for medically fragile, and that's their choice to come to this graduation, not. What I was mostly concerned about was the children that we're actually crossing the stage with, the students, just like was pointed out, was the military, the kids that are going away to work, the kids that are going away to colleges or to already have leases signed for June, July 1. I think, I think, and that's where I come back to the, let's have these collaboratively discussed, right? Because you bring up a good point, and Ms. McGee, you do too. But I think in order for our public, which is the other piece to it, I think that we're kind of missing, is that the public needs to know all of this, and a lot of this comes out in public discussion. So when we make the decision to, we're going to go to July, but the school board did not make a public discussion over the events, then there's not the argument. So like, right now, people are going to hear you say that, and they're going to say, look, yeah, I mean, I have a grandparent, that makes total sense. But not having that discussion in the public, not having that conversation, does not allow them to understand that end of it. And then when we do that, then they get upset, and then they come back, and then we, as a school district, didn't look like we were transparent and stuff like that, which is, you know what I mean, not the case here. But I do, I fundamentally keep going back to two pieces. One, I think it is the school district's responsibility to do things that are during the COVID crisis. The second one is, is that it behooves us to our people inside of our community to have these discussions openly in front of the sunshine so that all of the issues can be brought out, just like we do on everything else. Dr. Mullins does an amazing job. He comes out, he presents the budget, he presents the argument, we debate it, and then we give direction. That has happened so many times. And I think that normally, if this was an operation, everything's an operation, now that we're in COVID, these decisions are affecting huge amounts of people in different ways, and I think that that needs to be before the people. I think fundamentally, we need to make that decision pretty soon, if not today, that where do we want this one to go as far as direction? Do we want to give input into the athletics portion, into the graduation, into not traditional operations because we're in COVID, or don't we? I think that's the argument. And it sounds like, you know, Ms. Campbell, you're on one side, where you've made an argument that five politicians in a room, you know what I mean, is scary.
I want to clarify that when you're done.
Okay, I didn't mean to say, I'm just saying, like, I believe that the power of the people is inside the voice of our school district, that we need to be making decisions in a crisis situation. I would like to also have them collaborate. That's what I would like. That's all.
So I think, I think what we need, and I'll come to you, Ms. Campbell, for clarification on that comment, but I think what we need in order to move forward is, what do you want to be run by the school board, number one? Because there are thousands of decisions being made every single day. So I think we need clarity on what things you think should be brought before us. And then I think the second question is, do we need to alter meeting dates in order to make that occur? Because, like, I mean, we're back here next Tuesday, so surely there's going to be an opportunity to discuss some things next Tuesday, and then we're back two weeks after that. So is the frequency of meetings enough to accommodate those things that you want the school board to have clarity on? And I don't know if that's something, I don't know how we define that, you know what I mean? I'm happy to have the discussion, I'm happy to, I'm not trying to shut you down, I'm just saying.
No, I agree with you. So if we had a meeting every week, and this conversation had happened, we might be able to give direction. So meaning that if we had scheduled one for every Tuesday, we wouldn't have had to run through this crazy idea with Florida Today, taking four days to put an ad in and all this other stuff. So maybe the idea is not so much, hey, we want to literally oversee every single operation and all the stuff that's going on. I mean, I think that part of that is, is that we should meet. And if there's a big, I think that in big, tough issues like the athletics, that that should be discussed in the open as to why we're making decisions one way or the other. And that would give us an opportunity to say, hey, Dr. Mullins, I'm putting this on the agenda. Because the main problem we had was, is that right now, you were trying to call an emergency meeting, but we didn't have enough time to give the thing, and was it all these other pieces?
I was teetering about emergency meetings.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I want to be clear, I didn't ever actually say, let's call an emergency.
I was called and said that there's a board member that is requesting.
That's because Mr. Gibbs and I had a miscommunication.
Okay, all right. So that's what I was going off, I'm sorry. I would say that a lot of it could be alleviated by having a meeting every Tuesday, so that during this crisis, if something comes up and Dr. Mullins needs board direction, we can do it in the public. I also think that by doing that, we are collectively showing our public what our voices are, and we can do that here, and they can understand, rather than all of a sudden, everybody jumping on Facebook and attacking and assuming and everything else. And that also doesn't make Dr. Mullins into a situation like he's the evil guy behind the curtain in Wizard of Oz pulling strings, right? We're all open, we're all transparent, we're having the meetings, and any issue that comes up, we can discuss. But being limited during a time of crisis becomes an issue, I think. And I would recommend that we meet every Tuesday.
Would you be satisfied if we tentatively scheduled a meeting on our off weeks in between meetings, and then if we don't need them, we don't have them?
Is there a concern about meeting?
Well, no, my only.
We don't have enough on the agenda?
Yeah, my only concern is, what, I mean, if there is a particular issue that you feel like needs to be discussed, I'm absolutely more than happy to meet. But I don't, I don't want to show up and have a meeting just because we said we were going to have a meeting when there's not really anything pressing, you know what I mean? And there's always things going on, but, Ms. Campbell.
So if I can kill two birds with one stone and answer that last question, but also address, want to clarify, because, and I'm glad you brought that up, because I, Ms. Daskovich, honestly, sometimes I tend towards the one side, yes. But I will say this, I think there are people in our community who actually think that over the summer, that this board, the five of us, are going to be making decisions on, are we going to be wearing masks when we go back, how, what cleaning products are we going to be, I mean, seriously, they think we're making, people say, wow, you've got a lot of decisions to make this summer. And we do, we have a lot of really important decisions to make this summer. But those specifics aren't the decisions that this board is tasked with making. We task those, and the legislature has to the superintendent. I don't think I said that right, but you know, you got what I mean. As far as having the discussion, you know, we've got the reopening task force that has already been collecting information. I think there are up to six, seven thousand comments from the public, you know, and they're taking in those where they are specifically asking each group of people to have their input, and they're also looking at documents and the CDC guidelines and all of that, and, you know, budgetary constraints and all that. You know, I am happy to have whatever discussion. We've had several, you know, hearty ones today. What I wouldn't want to do is hamstring that task force because they may be looking at the input of 7,000 different people from our county, and then the board come in and have a discussion, and we have the few people, I haven't talked to 7,000 people, I've got an email from on this topic, an email on this topic, and come in, and then we might actually override something that they're working towards when they've got the larger input, if that makes sense. And plus, they know, you know, what facilities can do, what transportation can do. We could come in as a board and say, we want you to do this with busing next year. You know, they've already been looking at experts and, so I don't want to give away our authority, and I'm not saying that, and you're right, thank you for reminding me to get where I need to be. But at the same time, I don't want to hamstring the people who are doing the job because we, as a board, might come in and go, oh, no, never mind, you've been working on it for a really long time, and you've been listening to 7,000 people, but we want you to do this. So I just think we need to be really careful moving forward this summer in those issues to not take over when they've done a lot of work in those areas.
I'll just, if there's a second, we're not really doing Robert's rules in that fashion right now, but I can second Matt's request with Missy's, with your caveat of, let's calendar it and put it on there. I think it shows to the public that we're engaged, that we were up on the issues, and if there's nothing pressing, we cancel it. If everyone else is okay with that, yes, ma'am?
Mr. Gibbs, if we advertise for a meeting, and then we cancel it, we would have to advertise that we're canceling.
You'd have to get it out publicly that it's canceled. You couldn't, like, 5:30 roll around, we don't really have anything to talk about, so we're canceling it. So you might as well, at that point, go on and just say, hey, we don't really have anything pressing.
Can you, 24 hours before, and is website and social media enough, or you have to cancel it in the same manner that you called it?
The questions that are going to come up are, how are you going to hold these? Are they going to be in person? Are we opening our facilities up to these meetings? Or are we saying no? Because if you're saying no, you have to accommodate public comment if you're having a board meeting where you can vote on anything. So that if you're not holding in-person meetings, that means you're doing the recorded. That's 24 hours alone right there. You've already got public comment, so you're going to have to hold that board meeting simply to come on air and say, we only have public comment tonight, and here it is, and we're done. So that would be a question. If you're going to have public, it might be easier. You can come in and say, hey, we don't really have anything, or you can just let it up, is there anybody that has any comments, and do it that way. But you're going to have people that are invested either way, so I don't know if you're going to want to discard those opinions if they came out, if you're holding in public, or you're going to want to just say, go home at 5:30 because you don't have anything really to discuss as a board on that Tuesday, or are you going to say, we're not listening to those public comments this week, we'll do it next week when we come on, if they call in and recorded their conversation. So those are the kinds of decisions you're going to have to make. If it's a work session where you don't need a vote, just you have something every week that you can collaborate with the superintendent, this is what my people are working on, what's your opinions on that, the public gets to sit there and listen to it, you don't do public comments generally at work sessions. This discussion's going to be had if there's a major decision that you want to vote on, and you want to ask the superintendent if he'll put it on the next agenda. You would have that opportunity at that point. You wouldn't be inconveniencing anybody. So those are the types of decisions you're going to have to decide if you want to hold weekly meetings. Otherwise, my recommendation would be, you advertise them, you hold them, if all that is, is we're going to bring the public recording up, and everybody's going to listen to it, and we're going to say, that's all we got. Have a good evening, we're adjourned, and that's what you do.
Our staff is working seven days a week right now. We are in the middle of a COVID crisis. I think that we, as school board members, can come in once a week and listen to public comment and discuss any items that we have coming up. I do, I truly do. I think that the responsibility, I think that by us, not, and this is my personal opinion, but us not coming in because we may not have anything, or in the middle of a crisis, there's always going to be pieces and parts that we need to discuss. So my recommendation would be to come in and allow public comment and allow people to speak, so that if there is a landmine out there, that we can address it. That's all. And I think that we owe it to our staff, who's working their tail off too, to be part of the team. So.
I would just ask consideration, Mr. Susan, that us being here creates additional work for our staff as well. So I know it goes both ways, but, Dr. Mullins?
Thank you, Ms. Belford. Just got to frame my thoughts. I'm going to take this opportunity to speak publicly that I work very hard to keep this board as informed, sometimes on a daily basis, well beyond the hours of a traditional workday. I accommodate your schedules, your individual needs, your individual perspectives, and they consistently and predominantly weigh into every decision that's made in this organization. Because I honor and revere your role to represent our community and to represent your constituents. The decision of graduation was not made arbitrarily, flippantly, or without careful consideration, realizing that there was no even close to win-win situation. We went through a deliberate and intentional process to evaluate graduation when it became evident that it was not going to be feasible at the end of the regular school year. We presented to the board, and the board affirmed a plan to have graduation in June as a backup and July as a backup as well. I took the input of principals who received input from their students, their seniors, their parents. Yes, I met with our student government, students via Skype, and got their input. Everyone understood, at least at the moment, the implications of the world we're living in, the concerns and the safety measures that would need to be in place in consideration of each of those dates. I was presented the realization that to meet people's expectations, the district would have to make a decision by June 1st for the June dates. I conferred with staff, I considered the situation, we were in Phase One, and no indication of when we were going to move beyond that. I met my expectation to the announcement, weighed into consideration all of the factors, and I made the deliberate decision to not put my kids, our kids, in the middle of a grown-up decision. I don't think that's a fair place to have put them in, because as much difference is represented in this room right now, there'll be as much difference represented among the students. My heart is heavy and broken, quite frankly, for our kids who have not had a traditional graduation. And my heart is heavy, as the father of a military-bound young man myself, that our kids who are going in the military may not experience an in-person graduation. But my first and number one responsibility to this community, to this organization, to my role as a superintendent, is the health, safety, and welfare of our kids. And it may be a long time before we have universal agreement on what health, safety, and welfare of our kids and our community is going to be. And we're going to continue to struggle and strive and disagreement on what that is. At the end of the day, regardless if it's my decision to make graduation when it is or it isn't, it will be my responsibility to answer to the health, safety, and welfare of our kids. And I would ask my board, our board, to understand and honor that. And help me answer to our community where we're at and why we're there. And we're going to continue to work through the difficult decisions. This is one of many that's facing us for August 11. I'm going to take this opportunity and iterate to our public and to this board, and I know you know, but I, the men and women who are serving this district right now, through this environment we have faced, are some of the most admirable, hardworking, dedicated, committed individuals I have ever seen and worked with. I can't think of a cabinet member that isn't working a 12-hour day in this building Monday through Friday. And I know some of them, and many of them are working on the weekends because I'm calling them and sending them emails, getting clarification, and it's not Monday morning when I get a reply. I am concerned at the proposition and suggestion of more meetings to discuss. You have entrusted me to be your CEO of this organization and to handle the day-to-day operations and the decisions of this organization. And I will continue to work valiantly to uphold my responsibilities and charge this district forward. But I have concerns if we're going to talk, the, Mr. Susan, you've mentioned athletics. My staff has been working above all of the other responsibilities of the job to develop a safe and sound process and plan for students to have access to our campuses, to resume conditioning in the summer, which is voluntary and not paid, our individuals, our coaches are not paid to do it. So I, we're prepared to move forward, but I'm cautious now because I'm hearing, or it's being suggested, that the board is preparing to have further discussion around it. I support our staff's process to put together the guidelines. We were prepared to roll it out and begin training with athletic directors tomorrow, but I could certainly pause that if that's the wishes of the board. But I can't pass up this moment and not implore that our staff is working like warriors to support our community and our students in a time, we've all come to, the word unprecedented, it seems to be redefined every day. So I would, I would, I understand the concern and the challenge around graduation, but I would ask, are we, is the board suggesting a change in our process and our procedure over the over the indication of one situation that could, that could impact the efficiency of the organization? I will certainly honor and respect the wishes of the board, but I could not pass up the opportunity to, one, implore to the community the work that our employees are doing to support them and our kids during a time that none of us, this doesn't even compare to the movies. Our goal, our focus, our priority right now, our mission right now is to open on August 3rd with a safe and competent environment for our staff and our students. Our number-one mission is to educate and serve our kids. And we have an enormous climb ahead of us to do that and ensure the community confidence. That I can, in six weeks, confidently sit here and say before our community, we are ready. We have got every universal precaution in place, and we're going to do everything we can to keep our kids safe. Let's get back to the business of focused, intentional, and deliberate learning. So I would ask of the board, if this is a direction we're moving in, that I be provided very clear direction and understanding of what the expectation is and what that will, the expectation will be upon me and our staff moving forward, and the information that will be requested and required at these additional meetings, because it'll be important that I meet with them and help them understand what the additional expectations are. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins.
I can follow. So, Dr. Mullins, I think that you pointed out some great things. Everybody's moving. We're all going towards the same direction. Staff is pushing, and they're making these recommendations and efficiency, and there's not a single person in here that would disagree with that. I think where the main issue that I would say is, is that just like when I was speaking to you before about, I said, hey, I have some concerns about the athletics piece, the groups of kids that are going to be allowed back, what sports, all that stuff, can we discuss? That's awesome, right? So you and I might be able to collaborate on that one issue, but everybody in here may be wanting input on that piece, or they may want to give it to you, and I may be wrong or right based on information that I hear from my peers. One of the, when we go, I, the philosophical thing that you just said, kind of, I agreed all the way, and then the philosophical piece at the end was, if we have meetings, we are somehow going to change the health and wellness of our students. And I just, my thing was twofold. I truly believe that the school board should be weighing in and giving direction, and if that's not at the time when it begins, part of the conversation, whether it's all of those pieces of the athletics that in the beginning we say, hey, here's what our concerns are, or at the end, we need to have some input in there. And I think that also the people need to understand the argument from holistically why we're doing certain things. And so when I say that the extra meetings is to accomplish those two, it's actually bringing the school district into the fold of the decision-making process, which is statutory, statutorily what we're supposed to do, and just being a part of the process, not just sitting here watching it happen from a 30,000-foot view. And I think that was what my concern was. So when I'm making my suggestions, please understand that it is in no way a vote of confidence against what you do. You and your staff do an amazing job. I just think that during this process, there's been some questions that have been raised as to our role, and I feel like we have the right to make those suggestions and those moves. That's all. And I would recommend that we meet every Tuesday, take public input, and then if there's an issue that comes up we would like to discuss, we can discuss it there. But just like right now, the athletics that you're going to, you supposedly are going to roll out with athletic directors, I would like to see that prior to it being rolled out. That's all. And I think that that's a part of the conversation for us to say. That's all.
Ms. Campbell, would you like to weigh in on additional meetings?
I don't want to have a meeting for meeting's sake. Not casting, not making a judgment on motives or anything. I don't want to have a meeting so that we are seen as having the discussion. I feel like when I have input, I give it. And to Dr. Mullins and to Cabinet, I've sent articles and asked, hey, have you seen this? And almost every single time it's been, oh, yeah, that's the document we're working off of. You know, responding to the public directing their input to the people who need it. I, you know, am I willing to come here on Tuesdays if there's something we need to talk about? But I honestly, I prefer us, you know, when Dr. Mullins has something that he needs us to vote on to move forward, then we come together. But if, you know, if the wish of most of the board is to meet every week, I'll be here. I'll clear my calendar, except for the first week of July.
Ms. Duskevich.
I am flexible with what the board wants to do. I can come Tuesdays, no problem. I also, maybe we should consider the work session version so that I feel like a board meeting puts staff maybe at more work, and that would have to be something Dr. Mullins would have to weigh in on. But taking, recording public comments and then, or them coming in, you know, it just sounds like a lot more work. But hearing the public voice is important, Mr. Susan, so again, I just draw back to, we're the representatives of the public, so you reach out and say, send me what you want me to voice. I think that's more what it's about, Dr. Mullins. For me, I don't know about Mr. Susan. It's not about micromanaging the operations for me. It's more about, and Ms. Campbell, I kind of picked up on what you said, a meeting for meeting, just to, it sounds a little bit like, just so we can sit out here and talk, but there's also a role for that in our form of government, that if 200 people message me, they want to hear their voice heard, and I'm glad. I had forgotten about the 6,000 public voices. That's super important. But if they can't physically be here, there's, I'm their representative, and there's a role for them to watch it and hear their concerns. There's sickly and elderly people right now that are thrilled that you spoke up for them. There's a military student that's probably happy that I spoke up for them. And there's a role where they feel heard when these things are discussed publicly. If you've watched the news, there's some other districts in Florida right now where a district came up and presented to the public two options for opening, and the board, all five board members have now publicly come out and said, we never heard it, we never saw it. I wouldn't expect something like that to happen here, but without us touching base more, when stuff is changing so much, I just, I wonder if it's not an opportunity to touch base more. Again, not to micromanage, Dr. Mullins. That's, I don't, at least I don't feel like it's to micromanage. It's to, it's to be the public voice with each other and to touch base with each other because it's frustrating that I can't talk to you all about, about everything we're going through. So that, was that a nice, confusing non-answer for you?
Ms. McDougal. I want to say, Dr. Mullins, I certainly have no desire to micromanage you. I think the team is doing a fabulous job. This is a very difficult time. It's unprecedented, as we say over and over again. I understand that it would be nice, certainly for me, to see you all more often and to talk about things, but at what point, what do we decide that we want to weigh in in? At what point do we say, wait a minute, stop, we need to talk? Are we going, we're going to hinder our staff to, this is a very short window, and who knows what tomorrow's going to bring? We just don't know. It changes all the time. So meetings, do we want to put one on every Tuesday? I'm not sure. I, I don't know if we need that. But I understand that we are the voice of our public, and I do want to represent them. And that's kind of why I talked about alternative graduations, because I think we need to be thinking of that, because I don't know what July's going to bring. So again, this is a wishy-washy response. I don't feel, unless there is something that we need to weigh in in at this point. I like the work sessions. I do. We talk about a lot of different things, but I can't say that I think we need every single Tuesday.
So I'm not hearing that the majority of the board, I will tell you, I am more than happy to be here on Tuesdays. I have no problem coming here and having discussions, and I, you know, I think that it can be fruitful. But I do think that we have to be cognizant of, I mean, how many people, we have, we have Dr. Mullins, we have Mr. Gibbs, we have Ms. Escobar, we have Mr. Francisco, we have Lewis, we have staff on hand in case we have questions. Like, us coming here puts a drain on the resources that are already incredibly strained, whether we like it or not. It's just the way it is. So if I may suggest, and we have to be cognizant of timeline, because Pam has to have a way to advertise, we are back here together next Tuesday, so it's not even a week away, right? And then we have another one on June 13th, so it's only 15 days apart. Perhaps the better option, rather than just scheduling to be here every Tuesday, is if there is an issue that comes up, any board member can send an email to Paul, right, and say, we've, I had, I have concerns about this, or realistically, the best way to handle it would be to speak to Dr. Mullins and say, Dr. Mullins, I really feel like we need to get board input on this. And then he can coordinate scheduling that work session for the following week, rather than us setting up meetings and taking up staff time and, I, as far as I'm concerned, I trust him to take board input and be honest in following up with the rest of the board as far as his actions. You know, I don't, I don't think he's ever going to tell us, oh, only two people felt this way, or, you know what I mean? I think if there's, if there is a board request to move in a direction, he's going to follow through with it. And I think perhaps...
I would never want any of our teams to stop what they're doing or to slow down what they're doing.
Right.
Because we might meet on a Tuesday and change the direction, because they've got stuff to do in a really timely fashion.
So would you all be comfortable with just knowing that the opportunity is there to request that we meet on and off Tuesday if there's something that comes up that you feel needs urgent?
First off, if I could request, it just seemed like everybody was kind of in a gray area. Like, oh, I like the idea, but not really. Okay, so I would, I would like to get a yes or no, if we could, just yes or no. The second piece is, the answer to your question, Ms. Belford, is, is that we've already tried to possibly make a request for a meeting, which would have slowed down and taken it up. Like, if you make the request on a Friday, the earliest that we can get that meeting is the next Thursday. So if we're meeting on a Tuesday, generally, everything can usually come up right then. But by Friday, something might come up. We can't meet until the following Thursday, and then sometimes everybody says, well, do you really want to come in because we're going to be back here the following Tuesday? And I just think it becomes that piece. I truly believe that in no way is this a confidence vote on Dr. Mullins, and I don't want that to be this way. I just truly believe that there needs to be an avenue for the people to come out and express what they're feeling, and I truly believe that we, as board members, need to be giving our collective thoughts on the processes and things that were coming in. There's a thousand pieces that are coming. Like, the teachers' union, if you have to extend days, if you, like, all of these things need to be collaborated and communicated, and we're only meeting, I think, twice in the next month, I think. And so a lot of those pieces, I feel like having a meeting would be good. Now, that's me. I just said, I would like to have a meeting, but I would, I would just ask if everybody could say yes or no, or give a definitive, I don't want to meet or I do. You know what I mean? Because what you're saying is, is let's just let everybody just make a request, and I think that's too nebulous, because we still don't even know what our power is as far as a school district and what we can make a decision about, right? I think that the, like, if we can't, if operationally, like, if it's found out from the state statutes that, no, you are not allowed to say anything about graduation or that, well, then we are in wrong by having meetings to try to do that. I feel that we have the right to oversee if something's ticking up as collaboratively. That's just me. I've only been that way.
I don't know that just discussing it is wrong. So I would say, you're not wrong to have this type of discussion if you wanted, you know, at the end, in mid-May, if it came up, like, when are we going to do, and you wanted a meeting on, let's talk this out. I don't remember when it went to the board. Dr. Mullins mentioned it went to the board as far as approving June and July alternative dates, but that was an opportunity. So if you just want to have meetings to discuss key issues, I mean, who has the authority is the, is a different question. If you just want to discuss it, you guys can sit here and schedule meetings twice a week to come in and discuss things if you want, so. You can come in here and discuss all day and let everybody know what your opinion is. There's nothing wrong with that. You're going to take up, you might take up resources if you need staff to come in and provide that input.
Ms. McDougal, would you like to schedule a meeting every week, yes or no? Mr. Susan?
Yes.
Ms. Duskevich.
I don't think it's a black-and-white issue, but I'm going to say no because I am, I want to meet when it's important. So I said no.
If it's a work session, can we cancel the night before, or you can't? Is there no public comments?
I mean, you can cancel them. You just get posted that, hey, we're not going to hold it.
Yeah, unless there are public comments. People get back out there. They haven't come out.
Right.
Do we have to advertise a cancellation?
I would, you're not going to be able to get that in the day before, before you'd have to, I would say, send out a, at least put it on the website, post it wherever you can that you're canceling.
Sorry, not giving you a yes or no. I'm going to say yes to a work session, and maybe we just schedule one right now in between.
Ms. Campbell.
I'd probably make it a little harder right now because we've had three, this is one of the times we have three weeks, meaning more meetings. So not counting today.
Do we have three weeks between the next two weeks?
No, we have two in June, we have two in July. Same as usual, just not...
This is the only one. This is the long stretch.
Um, no.
Okay, I'm going to go no as well. If we would like to have a discussion at Tuesday's meeting about, you know, if we feel like there's anything on the horizon that we need to anticipate, then I think we can, we can certainly bring that up, but I think we need to make sure that it comes up, you know, in enough time that we can, Pam can make arrangements for a meeting to be scheduled. All right, is there any additional discussion for today?
Dr. Mullins, I think you said you were going to give us an update on athletics, but then you just said you don't want to give us an update on athletics. Do you, are you still going to give us an update?
I can give the board an update on the work that staff has done. Ms. Moore has met with school, high school principals and high school athletic directors, a small group of them, to work through a, what is called our Return to Activity Plan, allowing students back onto campus in a very controlled and environment with protocols and guidelines of what are expected to ensure their safety. Ms. Moore presented it to principals last week, gave them all an opportunity to weigh in and provide input to the proposal. She met with them again yesterday after my meeting with principals and solidified the, solidified the recommendations of return to activity. We are moving toward, or preparing, we were preparing for as early as a June 22nd, that's Monday, June 22nd, access to campus between tomorrow and next week. Athletic directors would be trained and would ensure they had the right processes and procedures in place. It would allow coaches on a volunteer basis to provide conditioning opportunities for their athletes. No guests would be allowed on campus outside of staff and the student athletes. They would be expected to work in groups no larger than 10. There could be multiple groups at a conditioning session, but they would be required to work in groups of 10. We are, at this stage of the Return to Activity Plan, locker rooms would not be utilized. Workouts should be conducted with the same groups of five to 10 students and be adhering to a minimum distance of six feet between individuals at all times. There's other guidelines and expectations for facilities cleaning, hydration. We are prohibiting the use of multiple-use water stations. Students are expected to bring their own water bottle and not share them. And then guidelines on equipment, towels, shoes, clothing, and so on. So I can, I would suggest at this point that we not slow the process, but continue to train athletic directors tomorrow unless there's specific direction from the board to pause, and we will provide the full details of the stage of plan and wait for further direction.
Can I? Can I ask a quick question? Dr. Mullins, inside of the gymnasium, for instance, we have, say, volleyball or one of those sports, am I hearing you correctly that if they were to work, they're working out in, inside, they cannot have more than 10 people? Is that right? Or is that outside and inside? I'm sorry.
Limitations on gatherings. No gatherings of more than 10 people at a time, inside or outside, in, in any one place, in any one area or place. Gyms and football fields can be considered two separate areas or places if students are appropriately separated. With appropriate separation, a track could also be considered a separate area from a football field. As many groups as can be supervised by an adult and that meet all gathering guidelines is allowable.
So, Dr. Mullins, if we have a football team that has 60 kids, are they only allowed to have two kids, two sets of 10 on a football field? Meaning that, like, the football players are, 10 are allowed on the football field, 10 are allowed on the track? So meaning that they would have to have two coaches? And if they're to continue to maybe have them all at one time rather than all day, that would be that they would have to have different locations throughout the school of groups of 10? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
After, after conferring with coaches, athletic directors, and all of the high school principals, they felt like this accommodated the needs that they would have for conditioning.
Okay, but I just, I'm just asking, so if a football team is, has 40, 40 or 50 people, they can utilize the different facilities throughout the, the day at the school as long as they're separate in different locations? So if there's one on the soccer field, there's one on the football field, there's one on the track? That was all, it's just asking that.
That's correct. A group of football athletes could be as many as 50 or 60, as long as they are managed in groups of 10, and there's appropriate supervision.
So on a football field, 50 yards by 100 yards, only 10 people can go there? Is that right? Just, I'm, I'm trying to make clarifications so everybody understands.
Mr. Susan, I'm confident that we would make those clarifications with athletic directors when we train them. I, I can't speak specifically, I can ask Ms. Moore to come and speak if that's the request of the board.
I think, I think what, what the question there is, is that part of the concern is the larger teams also band, say, for instance. You have your bands that may want to start to condition. It's very difficult for one individual or maybe three or four individuals to take and condition all of those kids in separates all day long to accommodate the large size. So if you have a band that needs to work out at Rockledge or at Vieira, then they have 200 people inside of there, then you're going to be talking about 20 coaches trying to run an hour worth or whatever that is. It just, it becomes a piece. So I would, I would hope that during the conversation with the athletic directors and everybody else, that social distancing on a field, which is six feet apart, could accomplish part of that goal, maybe in larger numbers than 10, that's all.
I will tell you, Mr. Susan, that I asked about, you know, if, hey, had started a discussion about marching bands, you know, which happens usually in the summer, and she said once they get done with the athletic part of it, that that was what they were going to be turning their attention to next.
Oh, so this doesn't even include the, the band and stuff like that? This is only athletics?
I do not believe this includes band.
Okay. Do you know, Dr. Mullins, of a specific time certain that we might be able to get back and, and have that conversation with the band directors and stuff like that? Because I, I apologize, I thought that athletics was also inclusive of band and possible, because I, I do know that those kids need to be in shape too, Ms. Campbell, right? Because they're out there in the heat and everything else, so.
Those kinds of things, I don't, I mean, I can't speak for every school, but they usually start in July.
I, I would just offer to the board that Ms. Moore is in regular and ongoing conversation with our school leaders, and that includes representatives, and she's bringing forward a balanced approach to providing access to our campuses while also meeting the needs of the programs that have made the request. I, I can't tell you at this moment, Ms. Moore provided this to me at 6:00 this morning when we were in the office, and I haven't had a chance to fully read it since we've come to this meeting.
If I just may real quick, thank you for making that happen. Any additional comments, questions, concerns? All right, then we are adjourned. Oh, Dr. Mullins?
I just, I would appreciate direction from the board. Are you comfortable with us moving forward, or would you like time to review it? I realize I've been keeping informed individually, but happy to, we'll get this out to the board
Ms. Campbell, are you comfortable with them moving forward?
Yes, don't, don't pass.
Ms. Duskevich, comfortable with them moving forward?
Yeah, open something, anything.
Yes, I'm comfortable. Mr. Susan?
Yes, and, and please get as fast as possible to those band directors to appropriately open them to.
Good. Thank you. Adjourned.
Don't forget to sign, Dr. Mullins.